And everyone who serves in the decision making of our city, we pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be good for our city. We also pray for your special blessing and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Now for the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call.
Counsel. Counsel Chow.
Here.
Counsel Conway.
Here.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Here.
Counsel Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Leahy. Counsel Mercier.
Here.
Counsel Noon.
Here.
Counsel Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Samaras.
Here.
Eight yeas.
Before we begin, any moment of silence, Counselor Samaras.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I'd like to dock in the chambers for Mr. George Karafalides. George Karafalides, 75, a well-known local business owner and longtime Lowell resident, passed away unexpectedly at his home on Sunday, May 2, 2021, surrounded by his loving family. He was the beloved husband of Rula Manellas Karafalides, with whom he enjoyed 51 years of marriage. He was born in Accrini, Greece, on May 24, 1945, and was the son of the late Alexandros and Sultana Papakostas Karafalides. George and his wife, Rula, worked tirelessly side by side at their family business. George did tail on Broadway Street, Lowell, for over 40 years. George loved nothing more than spending time with his family, especially Sunday dinners after church, fishing and making kites with his grandchildren. He enjoyed traveling and spending time at the beach with his loving family. He loved life, speaking about Greek history, and was extremely compassionate, which are traits that he passed down to his sons and grandchildren. In addition to his loving wife, George is survived by his sons and extended family: Alex Karafalides and his wife Stella of North Reading, along with their children's Maria and Sophia; John Karafalides and his wife Dora of Vandover, along with their children Arianna and George; and Jimmy Karafalides and his wife Christina of Chansford, along with their children Lila and Nina. He is also survived by his sister-in-law Vula Shanks and her husband Glenn; his sister-in-law Leah Foster and her husband Paul; his brother-in-law Taki Manellas and his sister-in-law Papi Manellas. He is also survived by his niece Maria Katsopoulos and family, as well as many nieces and nephews, both here and Greece. He has breathed and deceased by all his siblings. I think everybody in this chamber has known George at one time or another, have gone to him for tailoring. But I think no matter who you were, what time you came in, you always had a wonderful greeting, a warm greeting. He talked about the city. He loved the city. And when he knew you worked with the city, he just talked even more. But he's someone that I think gave a lot to this community and will be truly missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Samaras. I couldn't agree more. Went to George for almost 40 years, and he was just a great guy. Very sad loss. Joe, I'd also like to recognize Counselor Tina Mercier.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chambers for Genevieve Jen Carfield Ott. She was the widow of David Ott, who passed away in 2013. During her lengthy career, Genevieve was employed as an executive secretary for the assistant plant manager at Raytheon's for six years before her retirement. During her time at Raytheon's, she used her talents in many aspects, including becoming the counselor of benefits for the company. She enjoyed many years as a school bus driver in Billrica with the Shaughnessy Bus Company. She is survived by her three children, David Ott Jr. and his wife Lorena, Marilyn and her husband Randy, and Chipa Ott; her five grandchildren and her five great-grandchildren: her brother Edward Bud Carfield and his wife Diana; and John Carfield and his wife Gail. She was the mother of the late Christopher Ott. She was predeceased by her sister Mary Rico and dear friends Barbara and Roland Nickerson; many nieces and nephews. We offer our condolences to her family, relatives, and many dear friends. May we offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber to all those who have passed on since our last council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mercier. Any other moments of silence?
Under Mayor's business, communication remote Zoom participation. It seems like everybody is here today on the council. Motion to accept and placed on file by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Noon. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Next is a recognition. Month of May as the Asian Pacific Island Month. Any discussion on that? Haven't heard none. Motion to accept and place on file by Vesna Noon, seconded by Counselor Chow. Now the minutes of the neighborhood subcommittee meeting of April 27. City Council regular meeting, April 27 for acceptance. Motion to accept these and place on file by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Rourke. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Under unfinished business is an order to abandon a portion of Canal Street. The hearing was held. We waived the full reading and the second reading by motion to adopt, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Elliott. Roll call.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy. Counsel Mercier.
Here.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Samaras.
Yes.
Eight yeas. Communication from the city manager, motion responses. We will begin with MVP action grant update. Whose motion was that now?
Counselor Drinkwater.
Counsel Water, there you go. Go ahead.
Vice Mayor, we also make out of order items 7.5 and 7.6, make a motion to take them out of order at this point.
Okay. Motion to take them out of order by Counselor Samaras, seconded by Counselor Rourke. 7.5, vote adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan 2020. And what was the next one?
7.6.
7.6, vote to apply, accept, expend municipal vulnerability grant for $108,750. Motion to waive the full reading, second reading by title. Motion to adopt by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Rourke. Any discussion on that? Yes. Go ahead.
Very briefly, I thought it was great that the city undertook the planning process for the mitigation plan beginning last year. And I know, Madam Manager, at the last meeting, you indicated that it would take a significant amount of staff work to get the grant application in for this cycle of funding. The application has gone in, so just want to commend you and the team for identifying the project and getting everything in order to get an application in for this round of funding and for undergoing the entire process over the last year that allowed us to put the application in. So thank you very much for the report and all the work that went into it.
Thank you. Any further comment? You can't hear me? You can't hear anybody?
Testing.
We just need a little volume here in the council chamber so we can hear ourselves.
Yeah, we need an adjustment.
I'm sure it was a great speech by Counsel Drinkwater, I just didn't hear it. I got it all.
He heard you.
Testing.
Think that's better.
Okay.
All right.
Maybe down a little bit.
Testing. Is that too loud still?
Okay.
Okay. It's fine, Chris.
Okay. So any comment on 7.5 to adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan? Any questions or comments on that?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Counselor Rourke, seconded by Counselor Chow. Roll call.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy. Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Samaras.
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Next is a vote to apply, accept, and expend municipal vulnerability grant, $108,750. Motion by Counselor Chow, seconded by Counselor Noon. Roll call.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy. Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Samaras.
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Next is the motion response, parking kiosk maintenance. Who was Counselor Samaras?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I want to thank the city manager and her people for this report. It really is a very complete report. It's interesting, though. It talks about the number of kiosks that haven't worked because some of them are so old that parts can't be replaced. And then some of them you have where they have plastic parts and they're difficult to maintain. But they also talk about that people in downtown can use the parking app. And they stated that about 30% of people using the meters in the downtown are doing that. I found it very worthwhile in the sense that this report talked about all they're doing, and I think they're doing yeoman's work to make sure that these kiosks are working. And that they talked about the percent of kiosks working are now higher than they were. I think they're over 80% now of the kiosks working. Thing that I have, a problem that I have, though, is that, and this is what people have talked about, they go downtown, they want to make a quick stop to get something. They go to one kiosk, it's not working. They go to the second kiosk, it's not working. And I don't, a lot of people, they just don't go for the third or fourth kiosk. They'd rather take a chance to go and buy something than hopefully not get a ticket. But what happens in many cases, they do get a ticket. And, you know, here we are, we're trying to make sure that people want to come downtown. And it's one of those things, it's no fault of anyone's. I mean, what you have is a department, based on the report and based on what I've heard, working very hard to make sure that these kiosks are working as best they can. But I think at some point, Madam Manager, maybe with this report, you need another report that would talk about what would it actually cost to really revitalize the entire system? Because in a sense, you're making, people are working very hard to do what they're supposed to do, and they're doing it. And there's all evidence of that. But it, there's no value when they're just spinning their wheels. And I know you have a lot of things that, especially after this pandemic, that monies have to go towards. And I don't know if some of the monies coming in federally can be used. But at this point, I think we just need to know from you, what do you need? How can the city council help to take care of this problem? Because it's one of those problems that just won't go away unless we do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We can do that, Counsel. We can bring that back. I know we've looked at it from time to time over the past. As you mentioned, many of the kiosks have reached the end of their useful life. And I will say, the parking department has really stepped up and is checking them every day. We have people who are trained to clean them and maintain them, and that's something that's being done every day. But there are still some, in most days, it's 90% are working, but some aren't because of where the sun is or if there's trees over them and, you know, being solar-powered, many of them. So we will look at that. I mean, we do know replacing the system's quite expensive. But I would again mention, and we're going to try and put this out there as well, that the Passport Parking App on your phone is very handy. It's easy to download, and then you won't have to worry about finding a kiosk because you can just pay it right from your phone wherever you are. So about 30% are using the Passport Parking App right now. And it's just another tool to try and help people be able to park and conveniently pay for their parking without having to look around for a kiosk. But we will, we'll get that report as what would the cost of a replacement of a system be.
I just want to finish. No, I realize that, and I do appreciate what they're doing because you do go, we do go to a lot of the communities, and you face the same problem. It's just that, you know, we're a city that we want to do as much as we can, and I think you have the right idea. So thank you.
Any further questions, Counselor Elliott?
I'm glad to hear that number is 30%, Madam Manager, because that's what communities are going to, whether it's the antiquated coin machines or, you know, even to some degree, the kiosks. And I think it's a good motion because there's nothing more frustrating when it's a revenue source and the equipment. We forget how long we've been doing this, and it's out in the freezing cold, the rain, you name it. But nevertheless, I'm glad there's a plan because we do count on the revenue, but it's also important for the businesses that those spots turn over. That's really the purpose of it. So I think we transition out, we continue to make improvements, and at some point, like most communities, we're going, you know, we're going to the app when people are on their phones. So just one question. So at least, you know, City of Boston, Cambridge, others, there are signs with zones. Are we in the process of moving to that with zones, or is that forthcoming?
I think, you know, the, and Mr. Ryan is on, I know we've looked at some of that as far as premium parking or less expensive parking, you know, zones that are in higher demand. So I know he's been working and looking at that as well. That's part of the parking study that is being done as well, is taking that into account.
Right. This, I mean, you know, in the City of Boston, they just identify zones. I'm parking here, it's still the same rate. So at some point, it's, we'll migrate to that because, as you mentioned, there's how many spaces? Almost 16?
Yeah, I think when the parking study is back to the council, you'll see some of the options and alternatives that are being done.
1,800 parking spaces with 175 kiosks. That's a good parking issue. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand that it's very, like Counselor Samaras said, it's a very detailed report. And I know that the parking department try and do all they can in terms of cleaning, fixing, given that it's an old machine, and sometimes you don't have parts. Those fixings, you can't fix it. So maybe looked into, say, how many of those machines that need to be replaced? And the other thing you mentioned is, which is very good, that is a Passport Parking App, and maybe find a way to promote that so that, you know, it's also in the meantime addressed that, or even in the future, address any, if the machine's, you know, broken, you have this app, you know, and you can use it, you know, and without worry about coming back and get a ticket. So maybe find a way to promote that as well, the Passport Parking, you know, app. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Go into motion response C, illegal housing complaints.
Yeah, thank you very much for the report. Is Eric Slager, is he available at all?
Yes, Counselor. He should be on Zoom.
Okay. If he could take a minute just to explain that, especially when the, when we have a complaint of illegal housing and how we address that and what the results are as far as the fines are concerned and whether those fines actually have been, have been collected. There was a few, I saw on there, it says, how does this compare? You know, when we take a look at the 16 complaints of the illegal units, how does that compare with the previous years?
Thank you very much through you, Madam Vice Mayor, to the council. This is relatively consistent with previous years. This is the, we get complaints one or two times a month over the course of the year for potential illegal units. And as I mentioned in the, in the motion response, we do, if we can't get resolution, we do fine the property owners. And if they do not pay, those fines are rolled onto the taxes.
Excuse me. In the report, it mentions the, an appeal process that takes place, that there are a number of individuals that have appealed. Can you please explain what that, exactly what that entails, and how long does that process last?
Sure. So we, as a city, adopted Chapter 40U of the Mass General Laws, which allows for the city to have a municipal hearing officer so that appeals don't go directly to the district court, they go to the municipal hearing officer first. So anyone that believes that their fine was not justified has the right under the statute to appeal to the municipal hearing officer. Those appeals are held, generally speaking, when the city hall is open on Tuesday nights. During COVID, it has been more difficult to do appeals, and I believe that the municipal hearing officer, who is Elliot Veloso, who's also the elections officer, he was doing the hearings via mail. That can sometimes take some time, 60 to 90 days to resolve, and that's assuming that folks' calendars match up with the municipal hearing dates. Sometimes they are continuing. After that, if someone is unsatisfied with the decision of the municipal hearing officer, then they have a right to further appeal it to district court.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Eric Slager. I appreciate that. And thank you, Madam Manager.
Any further discussion? Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did see, I did see the report. I guess I was a little taken aback. There's only 12 complaints. I mean, I can probably think of 12 off the top of my head that, of illegal units in the city. I guess I'd like to tighten up the process, or maybe similar to other types of reporting systems we're looking at. That's one a month, and that just seems like a very low number considering the number of complaints that I have heard from residents across the city. So I'd like to report, refer this to the zoning subcommittee. If there's no objection for further discussion on what is a better process for reporting? Maybe people are concerned, maybe they're afraid, I don't know. But it's hard to believe that there's only 12 units in the city that are illegal housing, that have illegal units. You know, just, we brought them to the attention of the city council floor on more than one occasion. So maybe we can get, I don't want to delay the discussion, but I'd like to send it to the zoning subcommittee for further discussion on why so few, and what are we going to do with those that are still outstanding? Please.
Motion to refer that, motion to the zoning subcommittee for review by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Conway. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Any further comment on this particular issue? Haven't heard none. Do you want to go to a public hearing?
Yes, Vice Chair, we should go to the public hearing.
Thank you. We will go on to a public hearing. This is a utility public hearing. National Grid requests insulation of 975 feet of 12-inch plastic gas main along Jackson, Marsden, Middlesex, South, and Summer Streets. We will open up the public hearing to anyone wishing to speak in favor, in favor.
There are a couple of registered speakers. If anyone's wishing to speak in favor of the petition, they can do so now.
In favor?
I'm sorry, is this in favor of the National Grid petition?
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry, I was watching it, it was delayed on, yeah, Channel 99. This is, my name's Diana Cuddy, and I'm, I work for National Grid, and I'm the one that brought the petition forward, and I'm in favor of it.
So Diana, any further questions, any comments here?
No, just that we're hopeful to get a random location to install 975 feet of 12-inch plastic piping for, really for capacity and as part of our green initiative to be more energy efficient.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? The public hearing is now closed. I want to entertain a motion to refer to the wire inspector for a report and recommendation by Counselor Rourke, seconded by Counselor Samaras. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. That is the end of the public hearings. Next, we're going back to motion responses D, rental permits. Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the report, Madam Manager. I'd also like to refer this to the zoning subcommittee for further discussion. This motion is, I filed it because I wanted to know exactly where we were with the inspection process that we enacted back in 2013. It's approximately eight years ago. Just seems like the intent of the ordinance, we're just not hitting the mark, Madam Manager. And I don't know, it's, we've had a number of people leave the building department. If, I don't, I know staffing is certainly an issue, but I think this hits at the heart of our housing stock in the city. And we all drive around and we see substandard housing. And this was supposed to address it. So I'm not sure why the numbers are so low. I understand COVID had an impact. Other communities are doing it, though, and they're still moving forward as long as protections are in place. I understand people are apprehensive, but it just seems that we should be performing much better than we have even pre-COVID, Madam Manager. So, and I think this is important. I think this is important considering we talk about rent burden and rent burden and the amount of money that people are paying, and they're living in substandard housing, and to me, it's not acceptable, which is why we enacted this ordinance. So I'd like to refer this, I'd like to know why we have not performed very well since 2013. Take into consideration COVID, that only 261 inspections have been done. But I'd like to have a further discussion on how we can improve this. Why is inspectional services inspecting so few units, considering, I think, the significance and the importance of housing and the conditions that people live in? Thank you.
So that was a motion by Counselor Elliott to refer that to the zone, that response to the zoning subcommittee, seconded by Counselor Samaris. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
You know, I don't oppose, I mean, this is sort of housing and zoning, so I know Counselor Drinkwater and I have been having joint meetings, and happy to make this a joint meeting if, I don't know, I don't know whether it belongs in zoning or housing, so I'll just offer that as a friendly suggestion.
Okay, well, if you want it to be joint, Counselor Ruck.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Just curiously, Madam Manager, it says applications for 22,000 units throughout the city, that's over since 2013, correct? Is there any way to cross that to see how many complaints have been made against those applications going, you know, since that date? And the last motion response, we had 12, right? And I understand, you know, the number of inspections might not be okay for some, but again, take into account the staffing problems that are over there, you know, the pandemic that we just went through, you know, I think that the men and women that work in that department have worked very, very hard and tirelessly, you know, when complaints come in, you know, when inspections are due. So I'm just curious to see if, you know, those applications that have been put in, you know, cross with any complaints. Thank you.
We can get that.
Madam Manager.
We can get that information and bring it to the subcommittee, and, you know, again, that's, you know, the past year has been trying for the reasons already stated, but we can look over, you know, the course of a couple of years, and then see. And we can discuss staffing, that's certainly something that's important.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was made as a friendly amendment, so I don't know that it even needs a second, but just wanted to say that, you know, I support if we can meet on this jointly in housing and zoning. I think we have a joint meeting coming up anyway, so it probably makes sense for both committees to have the issue.
Yep, so we're going to amend that to be the zoning subcommittee jointly with the housing subcommittee, okay? Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Samaris. Next is motion response E, 39 Jewett Street. Counselor Elliott.
Thank you for the report. This came from a neighborhood meeting, a resident asking about the condition. The city does go and clean it, but it's currently, the city is taking litigation, addressing it through litigation, and hopefully it'll be resolved sometime soon. I know, as we talked, Housing Court is very slow, if anything, but I did forward this on to the neighborhood organization, let them know that the city has taken action. And we continue to clean it up. I know the city has been over there to clean it up, and people just continue to dump there. So the sooner we can take ownership or dispose of it. I know the corporation is in Dallas, Texas, and they're defunct, and what is the next step? Can I just ask you, Madam Manager, considering they're defunct?
The next step is, as you mentioned, we are waiting for the land court to authorize service of process. So the corporation in question, that was a Texas corporation, is gone. It's defunct. There's no other, there's no owner. And so as we done the tax title and went to land court to close on the tax title, we have to serve the complaint, and you can't serve it on the corporation because it no longer exists. But there is a provision, if the land court would give us permission, we can serve it upon the Secretary of State, and then we can move forward. You know, it's at a point that the value of the land versus what the city is owed, you know, is upside down, and so we want to resolve it so that we can, you know, take steps to put it out, you know, to be owned. So in the meantime, I know we've been urging, I spoke with the law department this week about it, to see if we can again speak to the land court, let them know this is, you know, it's more than a blight. It truly is a health and safety risk for a neighborhood, and it's been going on for years. And we'll ask DPW to take a look and see if they can continue to do some of the cleanup, but it's really just gone on for so long.
I don't know if we can block it off, Madam Manager. I know half of it is owned by the housing authority, but like you say, we, people just dump, and we go and clean it up, and there's trash, and it's a health hazard, so.
Unfortunately, we don't own it, but we're trying to.
Is there a, Counselor Elliott, is there a house on that property? There is a house.
Well, it's, the lot in question is owned by, there's not a house, but there's a house on the adjacent lot, 31 Jewett, that's owned by the housing authority.
You know, I just want to comment, if there's no objection. I was so disgusted reading this report, and exhausted from everybody in the solicitor's office that did something to try to acquire this. There was a beautiful letter written to the Honorable Judge of the Land Court by Gary Gordon. You couldn't ask for a better letter, and we're still nowhere, and years have gone by. This is red tape. This is so frustrating to see all the work that this city went into to try to rectify that problem, and it was like going before the courts and coming into a dead end. It's so frustrating. So it almost looks like an act of Congress must be issued before we acquire this property and put it back to the rightful beauty that it should be, so that the neighborhood isn't falling apart and deteriorating by this eyesore that they call a neighbor that doesn't even own it or live there. So I sense the frustration. So thank you for all the work that you did. It's like, I don't know what more you could do. Any further comment on this? Okay, haven't heard none. We'll go to motion response F, Mass dot in the Lowell Connector. That is Counselor Samaris.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Madam Manager, thank you for this report. It's nice to know that, you know, DPD is working with Mass DOT, and hopefully this will help speed up the process. What did they say, they were 25%?
They are proceeding with the 25% design, and there will be public hearings once they have the 25% design to present it, so there'll be ample opportunity for input as we move through this process.
Okay. I mean, as we know, and Counselor Elliott had brought up, when we first talked about this, that the state has been planning this, but as we know, it's been in the planning stage for a long time, and unfortunately, there have been several deaths, more than several deaths, that have occurred. But what I'm very pleased with this report is that the city itself is looking for some remedial ways of possibly handling this. So I want to thank you for that, because I think if we can do something, you know, that might have an effect, I think this is, will show the community that we're very serious about this, because a lot of people just don't understand waiting on Mass DOT, when are they going to do things? It's, you're the city, what are you going to do about it? But to know that Department of Planning and Development is working to perhaps come up with a remedial situation, I'm very pleased. Thank you for that.
And they have been responsive, Counselors, so.
Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, and the second part to that is my motion on the remedial, which Counselors and Mayors mentioned a little bit on. First of all, thank you, Madam Manager, for the report, and as Counselors and Mayors mentioned, we'll get the public hearing when we have the 25% design completion. I was just wondering, Madam Manager, if you have an idea how long, if there's a timeframe in mind, before they come to 25% design, because what I'm trying to get at is, if it takes a long time, I don't know if we can look for some remedial solution to this problem, because if it's going to be, the 25% completion design could be a year from now, two years from now, we don't want to wait too long to have some sort of short-term solution, so we can avoid another tragic accident in that area.
Madam Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I know DPD did meet with them and did talk about some remedial steps to take. I don't know if Craig Thomas is on Zoom, if he can add to that. I don't know if we have the exact time, but I know they are starting the 25% design.
Yeah, I'm here, Manager Donahue. Thank you through you and the Vice Chair to the council. We've spoken, DPD as well as DPW, with Mass DOT about the near term, moving the 25% designs forward. We don't have an exact timeline, but their consultant is engaged, fully funded, and moving as fast as they can. They take safety questions and concerns out at the end of the connector as seriously as we do. In the meantime, in response to that conversation, as well as the motions, we spoke to them, and they referred some of the ideas that came up, including rumble strips, like that have been installed at some toll booths, as well as some other more creative ideas for immediate potential safety solutions. They refer those to their traffic safety group, and at our next meeting in a month or so, we're going to review a few of those ideas and see what's possible to get installed in the very near future.
Thank you.
Are you all set? Counselor Chow.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Counselor Elliott.
Just briefly, this issue has been around for so long. I can tell, I remember, because I, it's good to hear the rumble strip suggestion, because I specifically remember former city councilor and mayor Edward Bud Coffield bringing that up after one of the many accidents that took place way back when, and Mass DOT said they wouldn't put those in. So maybe they'll revisit it, maybe a decade later, it'll make a difference in the meantime, because people just need to slow down. I don't know, this is just common sense, but, you know, there are lights, there are whistles, you name it. And I know there was a noise issue with the rumble strips, but I just happen to think that makes sense in the interim, so fingers crossed that they'll do something. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I brought it up many years ago, too, about rumble strips, and we got a report back that said the neighbors would squawk about the noise, and they didn't want any part of that being there, so I can understand that. But I just want you to know how bureaucracy goes sometimes. After someone got killed many years ago, crashing into the wall, I made a motion on this council floor to get the state to put a barrier up, a guardrail. It took me forever to get that guardrail there, and you know where they put it? Two houses down, a house that no one ever crashes into, so I don't get, and I was very clear where I wanted it, but that's where they put it. So I wanted it moved, but you can see, go there, you'll see it down the street. So I don't know what to tell you, but it is frustrating, and people are very concerned about all the times that that wall has been banged up and repaired. I think it's a new owner that must be thinking, why did I move here? But anyway, thank you. Any further questions on that? Haven't heard none. Motion response G, trees at Amory Park. Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, and thank you, Madam City Manager, and Yuvani, and Shannon, for the report. This is straightforward, this is Green, the Gateway Cities, where the areas of the lower Highlands and the Ager qualify for new trees planted by DCR. I see that the motion is, I'd like to have more trees in the Amory Park area, and I see that we're going to get four new trees, the Jinko, Serbian spruce, pine oak, and I like the last one, the scholar tree. And I think that tree's going to make all of us smarter if we go to the park, so I'd be visiting that park a lot, in all seriousness. It's great to have these trees programmed in our city, you know, green colors, green trees will make our city beautiful. And I also want to thank the Mill City Growth for doing the community garden there, that, you know, in partnership with the city. That's just great news. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further comment on that, Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Madam Managers. So what's the timeline with regard to the splash and landscape in this area?
The, well, the planting of the trees is supposed to be happening this season, so I think Craig is covering for Yuvani, but I know they've been out there. I know that the, in the fall, they'll do more planting of bulbs, but the trees are supposed to be planted either now or in this current season by DCR.
Will the splash area will be done sometime soon as well?
The splash area?
Yeah.
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Install a small splash area there, then send a report, which is exciting.
Manager Donahue, if I may. Just to clarify the splash pad, our plan is to put that out to bid in late summer of 20, late this summer. This will be a small splash feature, which will be flush with the ground. You won't see a lot of the overhead features, but it will have the ability for children to come up and turn it on when they want to use it, and then it'll turn off, so it's not running all the time. So it won't take a lot of time, and it should be operational by the end of this year.
Yeah, between that and the Mill City Growth Garden, that certainly is going to bring more, you know, resident in the area to come and enjoy the park. So thank you, Madam Manager.
Any further comment on that one? Haven't heard none. Motion response H, senior property tax exemption. Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the response. I know Counselor Chow and myself filed similar motions. This was essentially to see if we could file a homeroom petition, similar to what Westford did, to increase the mean-tested senior citizens' property tax exemption. I think the second part of this, Counsel Chow, was for a report and recommendation on increasing the senior property tax exemption. And as the report indicates, the best, the best way to approach this and to provide financial assistance to our seniors is to increase the exemption, so I think that makes all the sense. The process that they use in Westford just doesn't seem like it'd be a good fit here, so I know Counsel Chow is probably going to speak on $1,000, but I appreciate the report. There's a lot of good information. It does provide detail on how we can provide relief to our senior citizens. And so I make the motion that we increase it to $1,000. It's currently at $750, because I think that's, I think that's the least that we can do, and I'm trying to think it's chapter, excuse me. We have to accept Chapter 41(c)(1) to increase the senior exemption to $1,000.
I second that, and if the make of the motion would just make a minor amendment to increase the $1,000, but also to reduce the age to 65, I would second that motion.
I don't have any objection to that.
Okay, motion by Counselor Elliott to increase exemption, Chapter 41(c)(1) to $1,000, and lower the age to 65, seconded by Counselor Chow. Roll call? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Any further comment on that response? Okay, motion aye, motion response aye, gunfire directed at dwelling legislation. Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you for the report, Madam Manager, and the letter is on point, direct, in terms of how we want to support the state delegation at the State House. I also want to thank you for going extra steps to notify us when the joint hearing will be made public, so any of us can go make a statement over there. As you know, you know, Madam Manager, when you were the state senator, you support this, Bill, so does the Chief Richardson, and the DA, Mayor Ryan. Thank you so much for this letter.
Any further comments on Manager Donahue?
Thank you. I was just going to follow up and just say, we will let the council know when it does get a hearing in the State House. It is really important when people from a community testify at these committee hearings, so that the legislators know how important, and, you know, how important and, you know, how people are affected in their communities. So we'll let you know whether it's an in-person one or a Zoom one, but so far, it hasn't been scheduled for a hearing, but we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Any further comments on that motion? Hearing none. Motion response J. Hanaford Pharmacy Letter. I want to, I know that was Mayor Leahy's motion, and I understand that very well, because I go to that Hanafords', and they are closing it. And I inquired about it, and they said that they were making a drive-through. In other words, so people could come and get their grocery order instead of coming in to shop. I guess it's all right to eat, but is it not all right to get your medication? But I can, I feel for this motion, and it's a shame, because people relied on that. That was a beautiful letter, Madam Manager, that you put together to the store, but I don't know if they're going to change their mind or not. Manager Donahue?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't have time to update this. I did get a call yesterday from a woman from the headquarters of Hanaford from Maine. She did, you know, acknowledge the receipt of the letter. She understood. She said it was a very difficult decision for the corporation, but that they did close it already, and that they are trying to be as cooperative with the community. I'm just trying to remember exactly what she said. Essentially, that area, as you point out, is being now changed to a to-go area for convenience of people to pick up their groceries. So it, construction is either underway or, and that she also mentioned that though they could have transferred all of their customers to another Hanaford store, they instead worked with them. And those who wanted to go to CVS, they accommodated that transfer since it was kind of across the street. But the long and short of it is, it was a corporate decision, and they've kind of repurposed that area of the store. But we'll, I'll give a written report. I know the mayor was very interested in this, so.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Manager. Counselor Conway?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also had a few minutes, and I talked to the individuals at Hanaford. And I know that, again, just to reiterate, that it was a, they said it was a corporate decision, and that they thought at this particular point, they did have stores in the, in the nearby, so that if individuals wanted to still get their prescriptions, they could go to, go to one of their other stores. But again, that was a decision that was made quite a while ago. And also, they wanted to, they also figured that it would be good business, too, to have this food pickup, which I think a lot of places are doing. So again, I thought, I thought it was an excellent motion, but it's something that was already, apparently already taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none. Motion to adopt all the motion responses and place them on file by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Rourke. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. 6.2. Informational report on the boathouse proposal, Manager Donahue. Is there a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a brief presentation. I don't know if Camillo or Chris Hayes will be making it. They may both be on Zoom. But just by way of background, Planning and Development has been working with a nonprofit group, the Merrimack River Rowing Association. They are located currently at the, they rent space from the UMass Lowell Boathouse, but they're outgrowing the space. And in, in working with them, trying to look for other opportunities, this was an idea, that, a concept that Planning and Development work, looked at. The city owns some property out on the river, and exploring, is there a possibility of developing that property, putting it out for private development, that would also house this nonprofit organization, which is growing significantly. There was a boathouse further up the river in Methuen that closed, so there's about 100 rowers looking for a home there. And so the idea of having some kind of commercial restaurant, some type of thing on the river with rowing. So there's, it's a concept that we can make a presentation on. We may want to discuss it at Economic Development Subcommittee, but depending on the wish of the council.
Counselor Elliott?
You read my mind, Madam Manager. I was going to suggest this. I think it's, it's a, another, I don't want to say market, but it's another group of individuals that, and for those of us that live in Patagonia, when the regattas are on, there's lots of folks, and it's a good thing. And if we can reap some economic benefits, i.e. a restaurant, I think it's a sport that's growing. When we, even when we heard the presentation of the Rourke Bridge, they were making provisions for six lanes of rowing, because it's, it's a good use of our natural resources. It brings people into the city, and I think that's a good thing. So I think the report details that it's a one-acre piece of property. I would like to invite the neighborhood group, certainly, to participate in this conversation. Traffic clearly will be a concern, but it's a concern now. So, anyway, I think it makes all the sense in the world to have a discussion at the Economic Development, but I, I think it's an exciting proposal, Madam Manager, to sort of take advantage of this group of rowers.
Yeah, we're trying to look at, again, trying to get the best of both worlds with the, you know, the athletic, as you mentioned. It is a growing interest in, and utilize the river, really, where people can use the river. I know, going back to the days when the Olympics was studied here, this is one of the best rowing rivers. It's Olympic-quality river. And so having that type of activity, and if there's a way of having some other access to the river, which we don't really utilize as much. So that's the intent. Again, as I said, Planning and Development has been working with the group, working on some ideas, some sketches, and some concepts that I think are exciting. The devil's always in the details, but I think it's a good way to start the conversation.
Before we go any further, and I, and I will acknowledge Counselor Samaras, but we have a motion to refer the boathouse proposal to the Economic Development Subcommittee, seconded by Counselor Rourke. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And I know we have some speakers, but before we get into the speakers, Counselor Samaras?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. No, I just want to reiterate, this is a great plan, and something that has to be done. I know a time back, when the high school was involved in a lot, we had developed a lot of races to come to this region. And the one thing, in talking with a number of the restaurant owners in the downtown, a lot of them would call me, it was one of the biggest moneymakers. It was a crowd that came in and did spend a lot of money in the downtown. So this is a win-win situation. I think this is something that we should really look into, working with the university to develop these races. Thank you for this.
Thank you. Any further comments here? Mr. Clark, do we have any speakers?
We do. Mark Romanowski?
Hi, Madam Mayor and Madam City Manager. Thank you for this opportunity.
Gee, you've frozen. I think you are a doctor, aren't you?
Frozen. Maybe we can come back to him.
Okay, we'll come back to him.
Yeah. Sarah Kuhn?
Hi, I hope I don't freeze. I'm a member of the Merrimack River Rowing Association. I've also been a member of community rowing in Boston. And the Merrimack River is amazing. As was said, an Olympic-quality river. And I think we, there's so much more that we could make of this. A real signature boathouse would be a public amenity, even for people who don't row. You may all be aware that non-rowers still sort of look to rowing as an example of teamwork, as something beautiful that people can admire. And it's a very, very positive use of the river. If we had more space and were able to run more programs, we could also do more work with youth in the area, in the same way that community rowing in Boston does. They've had some very successful youth programs. They work with Paralympic rowers and so forth. And we have so much more spacious and beautiful river here, actually, than the Charles River. So there are lots of opportunities, and I really hope that everyone will support this, because this is a nonprofit organization and an amenity, and a really kind of potentially world-class athletic opportunity that is open to anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get back to.
Yeah, is Mark Romanowski there? I don't see him back on. I might have lost him. Can we go Dennis McCarthy?
I don't see Dennis, and, and he, this meeting conflicted with the monthly meeting of the Merrimack River Rowing Association. So he may have had to chair that meeting.
Yeah, I think that's it. Madam Vice Chair, I think we lost Dr. Romanowski, so.
Okay.
Not in a literal sense, just on the Zoom.
Thank you. Please express to Dr. Romanowski that we're sorry we couldn't get to him. I don't know what happened. Any further comments on, on that motion, on that informational report? Hearing none. Motion to accept and placed on file by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Noon. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Communication to appoint, now we're going into communication to appoint Judith Huber and Malika Ting to the Council on Aging. Any comments on that motion to adopt by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Samaras? Roll call.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway? Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy, Counsel Mercy.
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Seven yays.
Motion carries. Next, 6.4. Communication to appoint Susie S. Chang to LTC as Council appointee for 2021. Motion to adopt. Any comment? Motion to adopt by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Elliott. Roll call.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway, Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy, Counsel Mercy.
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Seven yays.
Thank you. Now, 6.5. Communication. City manager requests out-of-state travel. There are five requests for the Lowell Police Department. Motion to adopt by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Samaras. Roll call.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway, Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott, Mayor Leahy, Counsel Mercy.
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Seven yays.
Votes from the city manager, 7.1. Vote to approve amended TIF agreement, Legacy Hotel LLC. Waive the full rating, second reading by title. Motion to adopt. Any comments on this?
I just want to make reference that Mr. Panos is available for comment if need be.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Counselor Elliott?
Thank you. I think this is exciting, a piece of the development process. Do we have a timeline? I don't know if Mr. Panos is on, but I know people are eager and interested to see the development, and this is an important measure. I'm certainly going to, to support. Madam Manager, Planning and Development?
Yeah, I believe Christine McCall is on. And there's a few things that are being amended on this, one of them being from March 2022 to March 2023, and then a small change in, in some of the conference space, converting that to other space. If Christine's on, she could address this.
Thank you, Madam Manager. You captured the changes. The project is, we're changing, amending the TIF. The project is going to be completed in 2023. There is going to be a slight reduction in jobs from 45 to 43. The investment amount is remaining the same, and they are proposing to increase the number of rooms in the hotel. It will still need to be amended. The plan will have to be amended for the land use boards, but for the purposes of the tie, we wanted to make sure that was included, should they be allowed that increase.
Okay, again.
But we're very excited, and the changes to the dates just allow basically a year extension for their construction start date, their open date, and then the completion.
It's great, great news. It's a $14 million investment, so I will highly support this and look forward to having the Legacy Hotel downtown.
Yeah, and, and much of the change is COVID. You know, many projects did fall behind because of COVID and because of what's been going on for a year. So still on the books and still looking to move forward, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, the managers, Madam Managers. You know, when this came about, I was very supportive of it, because, look, even now, I mean, because of COVID, and that's the reason for the delay, and the manager alluded to, also that we don't have a hotel in the city of Lowell, and we have all this amenity. We have the Sonkers Arena, we have the ballpark, we have the auditorium. Yes, we do have an conference center, but it don't look like a hotel. It hasn't been for a long time. So we do need something like this, the hotel in this location is a prime for, you know, the tourists to come to the city. So at least they have a place to stay. So thank you, Madam Managers.
Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I don't know if Mr. Panos is still with us. I know we got the plans a little over a year ago, maybe a little longer. Are the plans still the same as far as the drop-off, the valet service, the deal with garage, and actually, you know, the plans of the hotel?
So my, my understanding, Counselor, is that the plans are substantially the same. Again, the, they were increasing the number of rooms from 57 to 64, and that was replacing some conference space that was otherwise designated for conference rooms. But other than that, there was very little change to the plans. This is minor, is how DPD classified it.
Is there a restaurant expansion as well?
Is Mr. Panos on?
He is, Madam Manager.
Yes.
Mr. Panos?
Yes, thank you. Pardon the raspy voice. I think I talk too much during the days. But the, the plan will expand the existing seating capacity from 90 to 120. And it'll, even though we're losing the conference space, adding seven rooms to it makes it much more viable.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Samaras?
I'm back on, thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. No, I mean, the one thing we've had with COVID, COVID just has stopped many projects, and I can understand the need to make some amendments. And I think it's incumbent upon the city to support these type of amendments, because the thing is, the way I feel, as the city pulls out of this, the problems that we've had caused by COVID, the one thing that we do not have, and Counselor Noon was correct, they didn't conference that it is not a hotel, and it's worked out less and less. They offer very little at this particular point. It's really dawn for the freshmen. It does well by, by those standards. But this is something that I think if this were to come to pass, this would make a difference in this city. So I think as a council, we have to support these changes. And I like the idea of actually expanding on the hotel and the restaurant, because I believe that's really where the business will be. So I do approve of this, these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. If I might just comment that the greatest part of this proposal is the 43 new jobs for the residents in this city and surrounding area. I think that in itself is warranted to put people back to work. That's beautiful. And I'm just very disappointed that I didn't have the bell that I was going to bring to ring it. I know when we mentioned Athenee and Connor, we ring the bell, but I stepped on it this morning and broke it. Oh, there it is, there it is. Okay, thank you very much. So motion to adopt and place on file by, no, oh, just motion to adopt by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Chow. Roll call.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy, Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Noon, Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Samaras.
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Thank you. Motion carries. Good luck. That's going to be a good project. Now, if, there's no objection if we could bundle 7.2, 7.3, and 7.4. As well as 7.7, 7.8.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Rourke, seconded by Counselor Conway. So I will read them. 7.2, vote accept and expend $50,000 for fiscal year 21 air mark funds, Veterans Plaza. 7.3, vote accept and expend $75,000 fiscal year 21 air mark funds for parks, playgrounds in the Highlands. 7.4, vote accept and expend fiscal year 21 grants for regional pilot project. 7.7, vote transfer $175,000 certified 7.120 parking fund. 7.8, vote to transfer free cash from 7120, free cash to various accounts, $3,656,021.53. Any comments on any of those? Counselor Elliott?
Just briefly, there's some really good news in this vote to transfer free cash, and if I could just speak in that real briefly, it's 3.6 million, and that's savings from this year, 3.656. That's good news because we're able, especially during these times. Maybe Connor wants to speak to this because it speaks to the administration and the conservative approach that you continue to implement when it comes to spending and hiring and all of the other measures that you put in place. And we're not spending this, by the way, just to folks at home. We're putting it into, last year we had to use some rainy day money, and we're replenishing that. It helps us on our bond rating as well as so many other things. So to me, I think this is important. It continues to show our financial stability, expands our financial stability, our financial position. So I don't know if you want to go through it briefly. I know it's, I know it's numbers, but it's good news that it's 3.6 million that were, that's free cash from last year, but we're putting it into various accounts, OPEB liability. I'm just trying to pull it up as we speak. Bond premiums, our salary stabilization. I'm presuming that's for our collective bargaining agreements that we're negotiating now or will be negotiating. And then 1.3, right into the general stabilization fund. So good news. I'm going to stop. Thank you.
Manager Donahue.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If the CFO could briefly address some of the issues in this free cash communication and the request for the transfer, I think you're correct, Counsel Elliott. It is good news, and there is one item on it that we'd want to also pay attention to and ask Commissioner Clancy to give us a brief presentation on, for the council. So, Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Madam Manager. The number, the free cash total this year is significant considering the year that we just closed fiscal year 2020. I do just want to take a moment to thank Cheryl Wright for her help in preparing all of the reports and working with the Department of Revenue. It's been a great help to have her around and to have her back. To have a free cash number of this size in a year like we had is significant. The year before was a larger number, but considering the budgetary pressures in FY2020, we're able to use this balance, which is the unspent balance at the end of the year, to strengthen our financial position. And to be able to do that in a year like the one we just closed is significant. So as Counsel Elliott mentioned and the city manager, the transfers included in the vote proposed before the council this evening do just that. They replenish the reserves that were part of the FY2021 budget as well as add to those reserves. So we will be in a better reserve position after this vote. We fulfill the city's commitment to our OPEB policy by putting 5% of the free cash total into the OPEB trust. That is other post-employment benefits. It is a trust fund that we have reserved for retiree benefits. And there are other parts of the transfer to put money aside for bond premiums, and then there is a $200,000 component of the transfer that the DPW Commissioner will speak to that is an operational expenditure, but will improve the quality of a key city service. Thank you.
Thank you, great job. And you're right about Cheryl Wright. She did do a great job. Madam Manager did, Susan Hickey start her job yet?
She did start yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Elliot?
I think the manager wants to speak on the 200,000.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, through you to the council. I believe Commissioner Clancy's on board. One of the things, and this is a bit different, but we feel it's really significant. We want to present this to the council, and that has to do with what's happening in our parks. It's happening as far as waste collection by waste management, especially in our parks in our downtown. We have a contract with Waste Management where they pick up not just the trash and recycling and yard waste from our residents, but also we have a contract for them to pick up in our parks three times a week as well as on the streets. We have 440 park barrels that are picked up three times a week, 175 downtown barrels. And the reality is, they're not able to keep up. It's getting to be overflow all the time, even though they're picking up. It's just not enough. When we negotiated this contract, we discussed the park situation, and we allocated a value to it in the event that the city wanted to put it out either for a separate contract or to take it back. Given what we've seen happen, especially this year, and I'll ask the Commissioner to speak to it, you know, Waste Management is not able to keep up, and part of it is there's just so many people using the parks. It's been a 40% increase in trash collections. In addition to the fact that Waste Management, who has to bring the waste to Wheel Abraider, and now everybody for a lot of reasons is going there, and they sometimes have to wait three hours a day to empty a truck up at Wheel Abraider. That's just another issue. But so we talked about what can be done, and, you know, with Christine Clancy and her team and Shannon Kohan, we talked about it quite a bit. So if, with your permission, I'd ask Christine to make the presentation and recommendation that we're looking at.
Sure, Christine.
Thank you, Madam Manager. I'm just going to share my screen right now, hopefully everyone can see it. I just want to make sure my screen is visible.
Yes.
Right. So thank you, Madam Manager. That's a great summary introduction. So Waste Management, we have a multi-year contract with Waste Management for citywide breakfast and recycling collection and disposal. And this includes the, their pickup and disposal of park barrels and downtown city barrels. So that's 440 park barrels and 175 city downtown barrels. The park barrels are picked up two to three times a week, and the downtown barrels are picked up three times a week by Waste Management. There's a lot of coordination that goes on with our solid waste and recycling team daily and really looking at specifically overflow at park barrels or illegal dumping locations. Especially in the past year, the city has seen an approximate 40% increase in tonnage in park and city barrels. This is due to increased use in outdoor spaces and also has become a source of illegal dumping locations. You can see in one of these pictures, there's bags of trash thrown into the barrels, so those might be sources of illegal dumping. And this is, the pictures here are had the field. Unfortunately, photos like this do appear, that circulate to the DPW, to the city manager's office, and often on social media, reporting these situations. And this is paired, often these situations come in after weekend attendance. So Waste Management is picking up their trash Monday through Friday, especially with increased weekend attendance or illegal dumping. We have a lot of these complaints coming in over the weekend. And other issues also, you can see here, we have overflowing barrels. So Waste Management is really contracted only to go to pick up the barrels themselves. So anything that is overflowing, DPW deploys staff to pick up that overflowing trash. So this increase in tonnage has made it very difficult for Waste Management to really keep up with the demand. So with this increasing challenge, we looked at some potential solutions, and so part of the appropriation for tonight's free cash of $200,000, one option that we looked at is to procure a, really move the service in-house. The current contract allows us to amend the contract, and we could potentially deduct that service at about $140,000 annually. This is an example here of the picture, oh, sorry, of the vehicle that we'd be looking to purchase. It's a 16-yard diesel rear loader, and this would really bring the service in-house. One of the, in looking at this purchasing of this vehicle, there is about a six-to-12-month lead time on procuring this vehicle. So that's something that, you know, taking into consideration. We also would, we looked at, you know, cost of fuel, and also we would look at potentially adding a parks employee to take the service in-house. So other than potential cost savings to this current moving the services in-house, there's other, really we'd have additional control of park barrel management. We'd be able to deploy a vehicle, different, we'd have more flexibility with deploying our, this vehicle, whether it be on the weekend or outside of our typical seven-to-four hours. Also, we could, also that one vehicle that we would be deducting from the Waste Management contract could be reassigned to other services that Waste Management is obligated to, to other residential services. They, you know, the yard waste pickup, recycling and trash. So those services could still be reassigned to other services within the city. So that, I guess that's really, I guess, a longer-term solution just because we have that six-to-12-month duration, but we also have some short-term considerations that we, I'd like to go over as well. So one is that Waste Management is providing some additional services where possible. So we have some high-volume locations where they are picking up trash five times a week. Also, we have just started, especially with the increase, the nicer weather, we see an increase in use in our parks. So we've added an eight-hour shift on Saturdays to help address some of these downtown or city park locations where we have higher volumes of trash or illegal dumping locations. And lastly, in this picture here, we have been doing spot checks on Waste Management's GPS system, so we can track to see that they are completing their necessary routes. And that's all. I don't know, is there any questions?
Counsel Rourke.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Yeah, it was a great idea, you know, proper use of the extra money that's being saved. The parts of the city where, you know, state and city owners may together, such as, you know, where the river is, VW Highway, the field that's right across the street from it, will the city be doing that five days a week as well? Is that part of the plan?
I, the Heritage Park area or?
Yeah, the Staples Pavilion, you know, up and down, you know, the walkway that, because those barrels, when we walk there full all the time, as most parks are, right?
Yeah, let me, Christine, are they part of our contract? I'm not sure. For some reason, I think it's-
That's DCR.
DCR is-
I don't think that's part of it, but I also know that, you know, the city cuts the grass across the street off VW Highway, you know, in between Dunkin' Donuts and, you know, the businesses on the other side. So I just didn't know if this could be part of the pickup crew as well. You know, I was just there the other day, meeting with some DCR officials, and they stated that it's a partnership with the city in certain areas of the place.
Certainly, if it's something that we're taking care of, we would certainly look at that and would work together with DCR. I mean, it's, it's just becoming a huge problem.
Yeah, well, it's a good thing people are outside and utilizing all the public space, right? So, yeah, great, thank you.
Counsel Elliot?
I was just going to ask what the recommendation is, to purchase the truck or take the savings, use some of the capital money and hire somebody? That's the recommendation.
So the recommendation is to, is to purchase the truck, we, and to increase the staff. Obviously, that's a long-term solution, as the Commissioner said. Everything is on back order, trucks, cars, you name it, but this is a six-to-12-month lead and so, but in the meantime, you know, explore other options. We're putting on extra overtime. You know, the problem is this, the situation in the parks isn't going to get any better. It's just getting worse. It's something we hear about every single day. And, you know, Waste Management only has so much capacity, and truthfully, they don't want to add, you know, they don't have the capacity to add more, to pick up more routes and so forth. So, you know, we feel, you know, amortizing the truck, it's $140,000 a year that we deduct from the Waste Management contract, the useful life of a truck, you know, at the rate we use our trucks these last, I don't know, 15 years. But at any rate, you know, we think that it's a wise investment, and because our parks are used so much that having it in-house gives us much greater control and much, you know, it's just a healthier environment for everybody who's using the parks, which, as Counsel Rourke mentioned, we want them to do that. We want them to be outside, but this has just gotten out of control.
We see the same thing, Madam Manager, at DCR. People using the parks is a good thing. So I'm going to support this. I think it makes sense. I think the recommendation has been well thought out. It's a, it's one of these necessary evils. We want people, we don't want trash. Look, there's a group going around the city, and I've only done one Saturday, but they're going around the city and they are working tirelessly because if that's one of the complaints you hear, we hear, is that the city is, the city has a lot of trash. So we've got to use the barrels. We have to enforce the, even the residential homeowners close the barrels. It's not just littering, it's blowing trash. So if we don't pick it up, I know the one six-acre field that I pick up trash every week, if you don't empty the barrels, the trash blows all over the place. So I think this is a good move. What are we going to do in the meantime? Six to 12 months? I mean, that's, that's a long time. We're just going to continue with the current process?
We're going to add extra overtime on shift on the weekend. The weekend is when it really builds up.
Do we have one packer now, or do we not have that? We have one.
I don't, is it, is it operational?
There is one in the DPW.
Okay.
But it's not a-
Not trying to get into that. I think it makes sense, and I think it'll go a long way to keep the city more clean if we're emptying the barrels and the trash isn't.
I mean, we feel that, you know, this summer, we're going to pay extra attention until we can get our vehicle in. And in the meantime, as the Commissioner mentioned, you know, working with Waste Management for the high-use areas to see if they'll pick up five times a week instead of the two to three times a week during these summer months.
Okay. And I just want to thank Christine and her staff and parks because I know I'm calling them regularly about illegal dumping and trash, and so they're doing humans work.
Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I agree with everyone that, you know, I feel like we don't want to prolong the pain we're in pain already in the last couple months, maybe more. So purchase- So purchase a truck, please. That way, you know, as soon as you can get it, you address not only, the benefit is not of in-house, is not only that pick up the truck, or pick up the trash in the park that is overflowed or whatnot, but also you can address issue with resident, you know, a burial, a barrel that's not picked up by waste management, you know, the truck can go there right away without waiting. So it's a great benefit to purchase a truck, and also the cost in the long time is, in just a couple of years, pay off the truck, you know? So do it as soon as you can, you know? So, thank you.
Councilor Ruck.
Thank you. I apologize if I missed this during the presentation, but the trash that we do collect, where is it going to go? Where we put it?
Most likely wheel operator.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And we've talked about having a dumpster that they can pick up, so we don't have to waste as much time going back and forth. So I know Commissioner Clancy's looking at all of that. How to most efficiently use this particular truck in all of our parks?
All right, thank you.
Councilor Chow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason I was trying to get your attention, I actually have a motion on this, and I want to request permission to suspend the rule.
Okay.
So in the interest of saving time, but I think most people made the comments already. So if we could suspend the rule and so could not discuss this.
What is this?
It was 12.11.
Motion by Councilor Chow, seconded by Councilor Dud. What number is that now?
12.11.
1211, okay. Which reads, "Councilor Chow and Mayor Leahy request city manager provide a report to the council regarding the process and costs for trash cleaning and waste barrel disposal at the public parks and public recreation areas within the city." I'm sorry, I did not see that. I'm sorry. And it's very hard for me to read lips from this far away. Thank you. Go ahead.
Sure. Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. I was just trying to save time, because I think most of the comments and the report were on point and related to this motion. And most of the items that I was going to speak on were addressed by Madam Manager and Christine already, but I do want to say thank you, Madam Manager, for coming to the Highlands neighborhood meeting last night. It was very helpful, and you also addressed on this trash problem a little bit last night. I did not know that we were going to have this presentation as well. But as you know, that I got contacted personally by different residents, of course, on social media, and I know you and your administration pay close attention to the parks and recreation. That's why you get on this issue like you are doing today, to solve it as soon as possible. There's only so much, as Councilor Elliott mentioned earlier, we have the local crew, some groups, volunteers, some individual volunteers, but there's only so much that the citizens can do. We really need the city to step up. And I think the things that I was most concerned with, we have the waste management contract, and we have the DPW and the Parks Department and so forth, but we are paying the private contractor to do the trash picking up. And when this thing was building up over so many months, I was just wondering what type of benchmark are we putting on them, the evaluation and so forth? And I think Christine addressed that just now, and you mentioned that it was just a peculiar year, when everybody's staying home and more people are using the parks, the trash are piling up. I think I have two main concerns and two requests, basically. One is that the, whether it's the contractors or the city employees, when they pick up the trash barrels, if they also put, pick up the trash around those barrels, not just pick up the trash barrels, dump it, and move on to the next location, because what happened when you have the trash that are around the barrels with the past few weeks anyway, with strong winds, they blow this trash all over the public space, all over the parks, and that just created more problem. And related to that problem is probably, you probably need more trash barrels around parks. I hear from people that Clemente Park probably need a few more trash barrels. I only know about Clemente Park and Highlands Park, because I was there this past weekend, Saturday and Sunday, to help the volunteers clean up those parks, and along with Councilor Noon, he was there too with me, with other people on Saturday and Sunday. Just those are the things that just want to address, you know, the things that are there already, if they could just clean up the area around the trash barrels. And just a reminder, there was a question, there was a dress to you last night as well, on scheduled pickup days to pick up the residential trash, even commercial. And for whatever reasons, those trash don't get picked up, and when the residents try to contact the company or whoever, the contact information or the, whatever they provide for the residents contacts not user-friendly, maybe you can ask for the time being that we're using waste management anyway, maybe ask them to put up or to change the system for residents to contact them, make it more user-friendly, so this not be like a frustration of, you know, whether the trash can get picked up. It's kind of anxiety when you have trash, and then you're afraid that your trash is not going to be picked up until the following week, because, you know, they only have one trash barrel, that could be a problem. So these little things make a big difference to our residents. And again, I thank you so much for just, you know, being on point tonight, being proactive and presenting this presentation before it gets any worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilor Conway.
Thank you, Madam Manager, excuse me, Madam Mayor. I want to thank the manager and her team, especially Commissioner Clancy. I think this is a great idea, and again, which has been mentioned a number of times, and that is being proactive. I mean, we have a problem. It's not going to go away. It's only going to, I think, increase, especially with, as we can see with the COVID, and things are starting to open up, whether it's traffic, and you can see that on the roads, there's increased, you can also see more individuals feeling comfortable going out. Where are they going to go? The kids have been inside, they've been zooming, they're not in school. This is a perfect opportunity for them to go out. And where are they going to go? They're going to go to the parks. And it's, I think it just makes sense that it's generating a lot more trash, and I'm glad that you and your team have put together a plan, and I think it makes a lot of sense that we purchased that truck. And hopefully, again, it will, people will continue to come out, I think, in larger numbers, and hopefully we'll be able to handle the situation. I think we will. So again, I thank you very much for that, and I thank Commissioner Clancy, because she's always, again, very proactive, working to take care of these problems before they become a disaster. And we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just very briefly, I know with the kind of changeover in the seasons and the different use of the parks, there's starting to be a fair degree of, you know, predictability in terms of where the problem areas are. Certain ball fields are being used throughout the weekend. Usually, I think by the end of a Saturday, oftentimes the barrels are full, and I know in some cases, you know, the pickup has been pushed into, you know, Monday, the beginning of the week. And so, and, you know, Madam Manager, your office has been extremely responsive, DPW Parks has been extremely responsive, but I don't know if there's any way, in the short term, I know we're trying to put some more overtime into it, if there's any way that we can just sort of, you know, be strategic about the patterns of the problem areas, and, you know, whether it be on, you know, over the weekend when we know there's, you know, a day of games, or on a Monday where we know it's been a full weekend, if we can try to focus on those areas. Again, probably not suggesting anything that hasn't been thought of already, but, you know, hopefully with the shifting in the uses of the parks, we can just try to be responsive to that. But, you know, I know it's been a big issue, but everyone has been extremely responsive whenever things come up. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Having heard none, I would entertain a motion to adopt by Councilor Ruck, seconded by Councilor Conway. Roll call.
This is a point of interest. This is adoption of all the bundle votes.
Right, yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Council Elliott. Mayor Leahy. Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Ruck.
Yes.
Council Samaras.
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Eight yeas. Order point eight, eight point zero, orders from the city manager, eight point one, order sixty-day trial. Various trials waive the full reading, with second reading by title. Motion to adopt by Councilor Chow, seconded by Councilor Samaras. Roll call.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway. Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Council Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy. Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Ruck.
Yes.
Council Samaras.
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Ordinance from the city manager, nine point one. Ordinance to create new chapter two twenty-two entitled Murals, given the first reading. Motion to refer to a public hearing on May 25th at 7:00 PM by Councilor Drinkwater, seconded by Councilor Ruck. Any reports of the subcommittee? No subcommittee reports. Ten point one, wire inspected national grid, request reconstruction of gas pressure regulator station and add a SCADA scatter system at the intersection of Highland Street and Thondike Street. Motion to accept and adopt the accompany order by Councilor Samaras, seconded by Councilor Noon. Now we have petitions, eleven point one. There are two property damage claims. Refer to the law department and report a recommendation by Councilor Drinkwater, seconded by Councilor Noon. Eleven point two, miscellaneous Mary Jo Alkara requests installation of a plaque on the corner of Hanover and Merrimack Streets in memory of her parents, Joseph and Mary Alkara. Motion refer to the law department for a report and recommendation by Councilor Ruck, seconded by Councilor Elliott. Oh, go ahead.
Can I just ask a question? So doesn't that go to the, would that go to the monument committee too? Or is it just going?
I would ask for it to go first to the law, and then if they think it falls under monument, then we would send it there.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Good question. That's fine. Eleven point three, miscellaneous Dean Saris requests installation of a handicap parking sign in front of Forty-Eight Mammoth Road. Motion to refer to the traffic engineer for a report and recommendation by Councilor Elliott, seconded by Councilor Samaras. Eleven point four, miscellaneous Chan Vezina Peach requests installation of a handicap parking sign in front of Seven Sheldon Street. Motion to refer to the traffic engineer for a report and recommendation by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Chow. Eleven-
Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you. I just want to make a brief comment on eleven point four, the request for the handicap sign.
Yes, sure.
Sure. I know this gentleman, he's a lifelong resident of Lowell. He, a couple of years ago, he had a really bad stroke, and in addition to many other ailments, and he would have speak tonight, but the stroke caused him speech impediment, slurred speech, he can't really talk. But he lives at this multi-unit property on Sheldon Street. He lives on the third floor, and that building is on an uphill street as well. In addition, across the street, there's a very busy Asian supermarket, and around the corner, there are a couple of small businesses. What I'm getting at is that on his street, by the time it gets down, there are many vehicles that go in and out of those businesses. They take up the small, take up all the parking spaces, and he would have to walk uphill, which he can't walk if his wheelchair bound, actually, I'm sorry. So he relied on his wife to push the wheelchair up the hill to get into a vehicle if there's no space, there's no handicap space reserved for him. Thank you.
I know just what you're talking about. I lived on Royal Street, right around the corner, for thirty-two years, so I know the hill that you're talking about. Refer to a traffic engineer for a report and recommendation, and we already did that. Eleven point five, national grid Verizon NE Northeast requests relocation of one JO pole at 6169 Rock Street, given the first reading. Motion to refer to a public hearing on May 25th, 2021, at 7:00 PM by Councilor Drinkwater, seconded by Councilor Noon. Okay, we're into city council motions. Councilor Elliott, could you just come up here for me? Thank you.
Council Mercier requests city manager pay close attention to the information pertaining to a bidder on the Lowell High School project, seconded by Council Conway. Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With this motion, I will be as cautious as possible without naming any names. We all know that Lowell High School project is one of the largest and most costly projects in the city, and therefore I want to be sure that those in charge of accepting the bids do so with the best intent for the taxpayers in mind. There are bids for different areas of the city building process, such as roofs, boilers, electrical, HVAC, and plumbers, et cetera. The bidding process does not mean that we pick the lowest bidder. We pick the most responsible, the most advantageous, the company that has a proven track record. But the main reason for the choice is that the company chosen should be one in good standing. Responsible contractors do more than just make low bids. They have good performance, and they are honest and transparent about their track record. They are proud of their past and have nothing to hide. A contractor that is hiding in the past is not a responsible contractor. I am in no way trying to control or interfere with a bid process or choose one company over another. I am merely trying to suggest a thorough vetting of companies before one is chosen that will not live up to their promise because they gave misinformation, lied on their prequalification, and they do not value the legal bid process. At the end of the day, the city should only award bids to contractors that demonstrate that they deserve the city's trust. Misleading about safety erodes that trust. Awarding work to a contractor that disregards safety may place workers' health and safety in jeopardy, and some of these very workers could be residents of Lowell. That's why I'm concerned, and that's why I am speaking up through this motion. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Council Mercier. Any further discussion? Council Drinkwater.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just a brief comment, that, you know, I'm aware of this situation as well, and, you know, I'll follow Councilor Mercier's caution in, you know, not naming names or anything like that, but I was made aware of a situation that, you know, related to the omission of certain information on the prequalification documents that everybody submits before they're eligible to bid on these projects, you know, is, in my opinion, a fairly serious, you know, omission related to, you know, an OSHA violation that, where there was an occupational fatality involved. So, you know, the public bidding process, you know, is important, you know, it requires certain, you know, submissions from every contractor, everybody is supposed to follow it. It's my understanding that this wasn't the only project where the same omission was made, and, you know, I believe it was, you know, corrected after the fact. But, you know, I think the process just has to have integrity. So, you know, I'm hoping that this will be looked at, that the, you know, the omission will be taken seriously as a reflection, you know, on the overall, you know, character of the contractor, and, you know, it's very important, you know, that I think we respect the integrity of the bidding process and make sure we have the best possible people on the job who not only provide a safe workplace, but will be open and transparent throughout the process. So hope, you know, that it can be looked at as the bidding or the awards are decided on. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Drinkwater. Council Mercier?
No, I'm all set.
You're all set. Madam Manager?
Just briefly, I can, let me just say, obviously, there is a process ongoing. As soon as it's, we are able to make it public, we will be completely transparent- As soon as it's, we are able to make it public, we will be completely transparent about every bid. I want to assure the council, the community, we take this process very, very seriously, as do our consultants, as do all of the people involved in this, and that is every single bid is vetted. And as I said, we will be giving a report once we are out of negotiations and we can report the transparency to the community and to the council, into the school building committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good motion. I know that I've been contacted as well, and it's good to have this discussion and that the, these contractors are being fully vetted, particularly with the significance of this project. So, I agree with Council Mercier and Drinkwater that good to keep all eyes on this. All those in favor, that motion is signed by by saying aye, and the opposed, that motion carries. Next motion by Council Mercier. Twelve point two. Request city manager allow John Scott Keenan Square sign be moved from the corner of Stevens and Chemsford Street to the corner of Stevens and Viola Street. Seconded by Council Rourke. Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With this motion, I'm asking for a veteran's sign, the John Scott Keenan Square sign to be moved, as the motion says, from the corner of Stevens Street and Chemsford to the corner of Stevens and Viola Street. Some years ago, a park was designed and put together at the corner of Stevens and Chemsford Streets, exactly where the Keenan Square sign was placed previously. The family who owned the parkland and named after their family, they was concerned that people would confuse their park with the veteran's sign, and therefore the sign was taken down and remained missing for quite some time. The city made another sign and put the sign, the Keenan sign, up on the telephone pole at the corner of Chemsford and Stevens Street. As you look at the telephone pole, you will see other advertisements indicating a used furniture store, spring softball and baseball sign-ups, a Lowell Catholic High School sign, and at any given time, a yard sale sign. In the family's opinion and mine, as well as this young man, this army veteran, this hero, killed in the line of duty in Vietnam on April twenty-second, nineteen seventy, at twenty-two years young, should be treated with the utmost respect possible and not have his memorial plaque shoved and mixed with other signs and lose his identity. Therefore, the family and I would like the John Scott Keenan sign moved down the street at the corner of Stevens and Viola, where our war hero lived and grew up on, and be given his own special place of dignity, of which he so rightly deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mercier. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, that motion carries. Vice Mayor, Mercier.
Thank you, Councilor Elliot. Now, twelve point three, Councilor Elliot, Councilor Noon, Councilor Chow, I don't know if there's any more, requests city manager spearhead a working group of appropriate individuals, including members of the police and school departments, to initiate action with regard to the recent mass department of children and families report on suspected child abuse in Lowell. No need for a second. Councilor Elliot?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Chair. I have to say, when I read the article in one of the Boston newspapers, and right off the bat, this is one of the most difficult issues to, to talk about. It's heart-wrenching for me and for all of us. But I felt compelled to bring the motion forward because of the report and the number of cases that were specifically cited in Lowell, Massachusetts. I understand it's a very, very difficult issue. I've, I've read about it, there's CDC guidance, and the only intent of this is to make it better, to protect the very people, the most vulnerable people in our community, our children. And we should do everything in our power to protect these children. And I understand there's a process in place. I understand fifty-one A. in the reporting requirements. Just seems like we need to do more. I know there was a report that came out from the governor, and this is a state issue in his department, Department of Children and Families that have oversight on this, but when I see the number of one thousand three hundred and forty-eight cases, it's, it's, it's very, it makes very distraught. And it's not acceptable. So I don't have all the answers. I'm not trying to overstep any boundaries. I know we got one email from an individual saying, well, the police shouldn't be involved. The police are going to the scene, and the only purpose of putting together, and I can only point to when I was the mayor, we'd set up the mayor's opioid task force when there was a, and a continuing opioid crisis. And I happen to think that that working group, the task force, color what you want, has made an impact because you're getting all the stakeholders, all the people, the experts in one room, and we're figuring out a way to do something better, or to figure out a way to address a, a chronic situation, and I think this is chronic. And again, it's, you know, DCF, protecting children from abuse, and then again, holding families together. I'm not suggesting anything other than just putting our heads together with the district attorney, with law enforcement, with social workers, with school people, the people that are on the front lines of this. I just feel by sitting back and reading this report, what, what can we do on a local level? And I think that on a local level, we do things better than at the state level. And I don't know if there's any, there's no silver bullet for this. Not suggesting that we're, the scale is tipped one way or the other, where we just, you know, we don't want to take children from their families. I understand the long-term effects of, across the, the spectrum. And I also understand you can't leave some children in situations where it's not for their benefit and they're not protected. So, I know it's, it's a discussion, it's a conversation as we can have regarding what can we do better? How can we work with DCF to reduce these numbers or, there shouldn't be any, one case is, one case is too many. And we all hear stories what happens when young children, and they end up in the emergency room, and it's just, it's just terrible. So, that's, that's the only point. Again, not trying to intercede on any statutory authority or the process that is in place. And if this work group comes out and says the system is, is working, which I hope, if there is a work group, if this motion passes, that we can collaborate, as we talked about, with the state and those individuals that know what's going on, because that's a very high number. And we were cited in this report as a region that had the highest number. And to sit back and do nothing is not the responsible thing to do. And that's the, the reason why I brought this forward.
Councilor Noon and Councilor Chow, we have a registered speaker. Did you want to go first, or do you want the?
I, I can refer to the registered speakers and then I can come up.
Same.
Okay.
Catherine Sano?
Hi, thank you for having me. Catherine Sano, and I, I'm the attorney in charge of the Lowell Children and Family Law Department, which is located on Church Street, along with the other public defenders offices. And I'd like to speak to this because it touches something near and dear to the hearts of everybody in my office, and that is fifty-one As and the, the residents of Lowell and their children. And I, I agree with Councilman Elliot that it's, it's something very important that needs to be discussed, needs to be looked into. I do want to make the point that fifty-one As are reports from many different individuals, some from mandated reporters and some from just interested people. And a lot of them do get, do get screened out by the fifty-one B. process. But what I really, and I, and I think that's an important point, because not all those are going to be well-founded allegations. So those are mere allegations. But I, I do want to say that I would like, if there is going to be such a group, I would like somebody, I would like my office to be part of that group. I think that you need people who understand from the point of view of the families who are under the DCF scrutiny, and, and where the shortcomings are, and I think we could provide that. So I'm, I, I'm not speaking against the group, a group forming, a committee forming. I'm, I'm for all sorts of, I, I'm for opening up the process and, and seeing what is going on. But I, I do want it to be not just the police, not just the DA, and not just DCF. I, I think we need another viewpoint, and I think my office could help offer that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Noon?
Yeah, thank you, the speakers, counsel for the defense. You know, we all know that since COVID, a lot have changed, including this particular, the last few months, I know that the number that Council Elliot alluded to, that's on the news, that was in the newspaper, a lot start with the educational neglect, partly due to the remote learning, partly due to, you know, sometimes kid supposed to be in Zoom, and they're not there. They just turn it on or not turn it on, and parent, the lack of understanding, lack of, you know, access or online. So that lead to fifty-one A. report. And who did that? Start with teachers, maybe school social workers. Because when you absent a number of time, and in some, some school, I know that they do send, they do have parent liaison call or the resource officers to go to the house and stuff. But given the COVID, I don't think that happened. So that part of the educational neglect can lead to physical neglect. And, and that's where that, all those report come about. I think we need to look into this. We can help certainly bring all the resource together, as Council Elliot alluded to, the DA office, the police, DCF, and including the defense as well. And so, because we all in this together to help, you know, children, and a lot of this neglect report is involve children, of course, so it start with that. And so I hope that this, this getting somewhere, if we can put this group together soon, the better. And the schools also should be a part of this as well, because again, the school may have to, you know, deploy additional resource, right? Someone go to the home and helping, I mean, look, the money is there. Okay? So with the school department, maybe appoint additional staff to help go into the home when kid is supposed to be on Zoom and they're not on Zoom. Or helping parent access that, you know, before it lead to a report of educational neglect or physical neglect or whatnot. So I think that, that's crucial. You know, we can talk to the school and, and then at the same time convene this group to work on this as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Council Elliot, for bringing this motion forward and including us as part of it. And you explained it well, as well as Councilor Noon and the registered speaker. I just want to add a couple of things. The, the number that Council Elliot mentioned, one thousand three hundred and forty-eight, that the number itself is staggering. But what's, what's behind those numbers is that why we want to know, and that's why we bring this, this motions forward. That, that's a lot, and the Boston Herald report that Lowell, that number is the highest of any region in the state. So there, there's something with that, that it's good for us to discuss. And in addition to the, the entities and individuals that mentioned in the motion already, as the registered speaker pointed out, I would like to include other members to be part of this group. They call demanded reporters. That include the, the teachers, the social workers, the childcare staff. If we can include those members in this group as well to get their viewpoint, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Conway.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm certainly glad that a motion like this has been brought forward. It's a shame that it has to be talked about. And I think that, once again, we go back to the COVID, it has complicated the situation. It's a problem to start with, but became, it became magnified because these students are not in school. And I know at the, at the high school, for example, which I spent many years there as, as Councilor Samaras, Councilor Samaras is the headmaster, myself is the housemaster, we experienced quite often where a teacher would come down, as we just mentioned, has just been mentioned, one of the mandate individuals that, mandate reporters, and would say that so-and-so in class, her behavior has changed, and I'm not sure why. And that was, that was a bell that would go off. And, and what, what we had, I, I think was extremely important, was what we called a crisis intervention team at that point. It was headed up by an incredible individual who was, who was great at this, and it was Beverly Koffler. And she would do the research and the, I know SROs were certainly part of this, public health, hospitals. It was a combination of everything working together as a team. And, and then you could identify the problem and then go from there to, to solve it. So I think it's, I think it's a, a great idea that we go back to the table and we try to figure out, bring all these groups together, all these groups that have an interest in it, that has just been mentioned. And I think that's going to be certainly a group or an entity that can help, help solve some of these issues. And these numbers, the numbers are extremely high and very, very alarming. So I, I thank the, the three counselors for putting this motion on. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Rourke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, Madam Manager, if you had idea to maybe in a report actually explain the fifty-one A. and B. process, who are mandated reporters, you know, such as myself, such as Council Mercier. I know that at one point in time, you know, Council Samaras and Conway were also mandated reporters as well. It does cover a wide variety of professions of who was required to, to file at any point in time. But the number is high and is alarming. You know, the reason why it is that high is because, you know, there was a look into the situation observing a child, and concern was placed and a fifty-one A. was filed, right? And, you know, they are done for many different reasons. And, you know, if the purpose of the group is to find out what those underlying reasons are, to, to help in that way, I think that'd be good. You know, there is an incredible privacy situation in regards to this as well. You know, we're not specific cases, can be spoken about, but if the group is to be put together to, to underlying reasons, you know, such as drugs, alcohol, or whatnot, then, you know, it can be very beneficial, you know, to, to the city. But I just think that for everybody to be helpful to know what the, what the process actually is, you know, when DCF gets involved, it's not necessarily a, a bad thing, you know, they are involved to, to help the families, you know, to keep the children at home, you know, unless it's a, you know, a physical abuse, a sexual abuse situation. A lot of the times, you know, they are called, you know, for wellness, not just a child, but for the family, if, you know, if someone's not working or the child's at home alone and things like that. So, you know, again, the report was concerning, but I think that, you know, to see what we could do to help the community in general, you know, parents and so forth, I think, you know, should probably be the focus of the group. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Samaras.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. No, this was a very good motion. And actually, as was stated, a timely motion because of, we're coming out of COVID and, you know, a lot of students who have not been in school have not had a chance to, will say, tell their story. But I think the one thing that needs to be, to assure that we include a lot of education because, one thing I found, and I think Mr. Conway can talk about that also, when we talked, when we found, when we talked to a student, sometimes we ended up talking with the families, or the families would call and say, you don't understand, or...
the families, or the families would call and say, you don't understand, or, you know, why did you report us and what have you? And if you talked to a number of those parents, they really had, some of them had no clue as to what we were talking about, or what was happening to their children. Or a mother or a father was just avoiding the issue. And it goes on far more than what we think. And it's in families that sometimes you find it hard to believe that it does happen. But schools are one of the places that can really identify when a child's in trouble because when you talk about our teachers, our teachers really know our students, and they know when they're not, we'll say, operate in the best way that they can. They know that something's going on in their life. And good teachers will always try to find a way to get some of that, get some information from a child, because if you have a sense of something wrong, then you try to find out. But what we did address in many cases was a lot of people who really, really did not understand what was going on and observed it, and sometimes were part of it, but, you know, had no true understanding. So there's education and there's, we have to really train our people even more so in today's world to be very aware of the potentials and how to recognize child abuse or recognize that something's going on in a child's life. So thank you for this motion, but there's a lot of work that has to be done and a lot of understanding of a very serious problem.
Thank you, Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like Counselor Ruck indicated too, it's important to note that this come out as an allegation. And so after the working, when the working groups start talking about it, after the investigation, some of those cases will be screened out, meaning not supported, like Counselor Samaras indicated, because they're going in, went to report, to investigate. And, you know, you see oftentimes it's screened out, meaning not supported. If they do support it, if the DCF support it, then they will, you know, provide resource, provide support before they take the kid away, you know. Taking the kid away is usually the last resort that DCF do. Counselor Ruck will allude to that as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. So right, there are high-risk cases, and then there are some sort of lower-risk case, cases of neglect. And I think what's also, what's most important that can, to bridge this gap, and Counselor Samaras started to allude to it, yeah, there's intervention, but I think there's also awareness and, you know, the strategy to provide a public outreach. I hope that's one component that comes out, that we need to do, more public engagement, more education campaigns. It's a serious problem, and it's a hard conversation to have, that perhaps the more troubling, you know, families in the community. But we have to do something, we have to act, and the current process in place is not working as it, as it's intended. So I just wanted to close on that. There are, yes, identify, intervene, but also that public awareness to let people know that there is support, there is help, there's treatment. And I think this group can evolve to bring recommendations forward.
Thank you. Any other further comments? Hearing none, motion to accept. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying yea. Motion, any opposition motion carries. Next, 12.4, Counselor Conway requests city manager and her team develop a program and strategies that will help identify and mitigate scams slash frauds that affect our citizens, especially our seniors. Further engage the appropriate organizations, partnerships, and departments who will assist with this plan of action. Include but not limited to the police department, senior center, district attorney's office, health department, chamber of commerce, banking businesses, law department, and others. Seconded by Counselor Elliott. Counselor Conway?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I tried to include a number of different organizations to help out in a situation like this. It's a shame, once again, to have to put a motion like this on. If you have a conversation with someone and you're talking about scams or some type of fraud, either that individual has experienced it, or they know a neighbor or a friend or a relative that has, has experienced it. And also, you find that there's such a wide variety of scams. And I noticed as I was doing a little bit of research, I, I found that there was a group, I think it was called maybe the Scam Team down in Albuquerque, New Mexico, where they put a group of people together, as I, something very similar to what I just said here. And certainly, I don't expect this team to go out and find individuals and then get monies back from them. That's not the purpose of it. I think it's more to sit down and to meet with a group of people that have some expertise in this area and find out, you know, how do we educate people? If somebody has a fraud, if there's a fraud against someone, who would we direct that individual to, to get some help? And I think that's something that, I think it's needed, because again, a lot of fraud, by the way, are not reported. They feel embarrassed. Back a couple weeks ago, actually, a couple months ago, I got a call from Mary Calery, and she said to me, there's a form here that says that you're looking for unemployment. And I said to her, I said, I didn't know I was fired. And she said, no, I don't think so. She's, because she got one and a number of other people got the same, the same message. So again, it comes in different forms. I think that, you know, typically, if you are a senior, you're a special target for these con artists and people over the age of 50 represent 56% of all the scams. And one of the things that's really, has been enhanced here is the telemarketing fraud alone is a $40 billion a year business. And although people in their 20s report being defrauded, more often than people over 70, they tend to lose less money to the fraudsters than senior citizens. And scams and frauds conducted by mail, telephones, computers are increasingly coming from other countries, and that's another issue. So the Federal Trade Commission received more than 2.1 million fraud reports from consumers in the year 2020, according to a newly released data, with imposter scams remaining the most common type of fraud reported to the FTC. And the online scams, shopping, is the second most common frauds that are reported by consumers. You know, when you look back in COVID, obviously has a big effect on this too, because it says here that, in some of my research, consumers reported losing more than $3.3 billion to fraud in 2020, and that was up from $1.8 billion the year before. So as you can see, it certainly increased because of that. And, you know, just over a third of all the consumers who filed a fraud report with the FTC, 34%, I mean, these, these numbers are staggering. 34% reported losing money, up from 23% the year before. So again, data is overwhelmingly evident. Frauds and scams sadly are alive and well. We need to bring partners, organizations, and others to the table and develop a plan that will help fight and protect the dreams and goals of Lowellians of all ages. Thank you, Ms., excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments? If there's no objection, I'd like to comment and say that I get scammed as well. When you go to renew your license, you can get it with the star on it, which means that you can go into federal buildings and things like that. It's almost like a passport, but it's a, it's the ultimate, the license that you could get. But if you don't know this, you cannot laminate any important papers. And I laminated my social security card, so they wouldn't accept it being laminated. Well, I laminated everything. I laminated my birth certificate, because God knows that would have fallen apart. It's that old, so I had to laminate it or it would disintegrate. But anyway, so I went down there and they wouldn't accept it, so I had to get a social security card, and I thought I could do this online. And they told me it would cost $33, but yet they took $99 out of my bank account. And then I called the social security office on Warren Street, and they said that it's free. So something for free, I paid $99 for, but, I mean, so there's, there's a fraud right there, and I did report it. And they did hear of it many times, but people don't know, so I should have went to the one on Warren Street in the first place. But I'm very happy to say that Enterprise Bank sent me a paper that said, beware of new scams targeting your personal information. That was some time ago, and like beware of fraudulent coronavirus tests, treatments, and office for vaccinations, keep your information private. That was pretty tough with my social security, because they, it was, they knew my number when I had to tell them, and then they wanted other information, which I gave them. So I rushed right down to the bank and canceled my credit card. So, I mean, it's, you just don't think, you think that people are as honest as you, but they're not. But if you listen to WCAP this morning in the news, the latest is a gift card scam, so they're out there all the time, and we have to be aware. So that's a very good motion, and I just wanted to bring that up. Any further comments? Okay, motion, accept the motion. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. 12.5, Counselor Noon requests city manager have proper department install a four-way stop at the intersection of Rockingham Avenue and West Marlin Street, and at the intersection of Mariposa Avenue and West Marlin Street. Seconded by Counselor Elliott. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think a stop sign, a four-way stop sign on Mariposa heading north at the West Marlin intersection needed, as well as, as I indicated in the report, in the request, that is intersection of Rockingham Ave. and West Marlin Street is needed, because this is area like growing number of children, you know, they ride bike, they road skate down the hill, usually without stopping. So the car was heading north on Mariposa, cannot see them. You know, and this is something that accident, you know, waiting to happen. So we can look into it, and those are the two intersection that is really busy, you know, with, in this, in that area. So as soon as we can look into it and address it, it's better, because I know that a number of resident, I know that Mr. Smith, Joe Smith, has also wrote to the council, you know, asking for support on this, as well as others that I spoke to want to see this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Next is a motion by Counselor Drinkwater and Counselor Noon, request the city manager work with the local fire department to provide a report on the condition of fire stations in the city, including priority repairs for each station and an update on repairs made since the last report provided to the council. No need for a second. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At our last council meeting, this came up briefly in our discussion about investments in firefighter staffing, that there's also a need for investments in the fire stations, the physical structures. There was some thought given to whether with the federal money that will be coming the city's way, whether or not there might be some that were, that were able to dedicate to improving the condition of our fire stations. Whether or not that's the case, and hopefully it is, I think it makes sense, just to work with the department to come up with the, you know, priorities for repairs or capital investments that are needed in the buildings. I know this is something that was discussed not, not too long ago, and in looking at it after the last meeting, I saw that there was a motion by Counselor Noon back in 2018 that resulted in a report from, from the chief on some of the priority repairs in the stations. I think the municipal facilities subcommittee had met on it and discussed it, so thought it would be an appropriate time to, one, check in on that report, see where we are in terms of the needed repairs that were put on that list, and also to update it. So hopefully, you know, whether it's, you know, I know we'll also be getting a capital plan that may be informative for some, you know, initial investments in this, or, you know, but if we are able to dedicate any, any money, whether it's from the, you know, American Rescue Plan or in, hopefully, an infrastructure bill, that will be ready to know where the investments are needed most. So, you know, I appreciate that Counselor Noon got the ball rolling on this issue, you know, a few, a few years ago with that report, but as things happen, there are always updates and new, new things arise. So thought it would be a good time to revisit it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know that we do have some money from, revenue from the recreational marijuana that's supposed to use for a municipal building. That, and in addition, you, you know, can put in capital plans to address some of those immediate concerns. The immediate concerns, certainly, we can use the recreational marijuana revenue to address it. I know the last time, you know, madam managers have a list of, you know, the last request that I filed, and the report came back and saying, this is some of the things that need to be done. It's important, though, I know that you work very hard, you know, to try to get the deal with the fire union to reduce the brownout, but we need to do more than that. We need to making sure that they, the building that they house at, you know, that they work from safe, you know? Also that they have all the tool needed, you know, to protect our residents, so, and that's, I was glad that Counselor Drinkwater, you know, brought me in on this, and so I look forward to report. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Counselor Ruck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is a great motion brought forward by Counselors Drinkwater and Noon. And if we could ever replicate what we did in schools, Madam Manager, of how DBW got in there and just basically, you know, spent time and did a tremendous job of fixing them up and getting them ready to go for students to be in place. You know, I know the windows were a big deal at the schools, and, you know, it's the same thing at different firehouses throughout the city. You know, things such as holes in kitchen floors or roof leaks, electrical issues, that things that we could probably handle, hopefully, in-house, before you get to the big stuff such as concrete, you know, falling and things like that. If we could ever put a plan together similar to what we did for the school system and allocate the time and the resources to it, I know that some of our firehouses are considered historic as well, and maybe so there's, you know, some money available through that process. But I think, again, you know, with how successful the city was and your administration was with the schools, if we could ever replicate that with our firehouses, just get in there and get the things done, it'd be a huge benefit, not only to the Madam Moon of the department, but obviously to the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Samaras?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. No, this is a very good motion, and I think a needed motion. And I know the city manager is quite aware, but Counselor Ruck is correct. We've done a lot, and we've tried to do a lot in the school systems. But, you know, I almost have to commend the fire department people, because some of the conditions are really unacceptable, not only when we talk about ceilings that leak. There's no question about that. And... And I think this motion outlines that we develop a plan and look at what the expenses will be. But I think this is something where we really now have to spend our attention to. And I would say the same almost with the police department. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. 12.7, Councilor Drinkwater requests city manager investigate ways to calm vehicle speed and improve pedestrian safety at crosswalks on West Sixth Street at Eagle Park. Councilor Drinkwater, there is a registered speaker. Would you want that person to go first?
Please.
Okay. Seconded by Councilor Rourke.
Mona Tyree.
Hello. Yes. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Mona Tyree, and I live at 24 West Sixth Street in Lowell. And I support this motion, and thank you, Councilor Drinkwater, for bringing this up. One of the things that I wanted to discuss and just bring attention to is, I've lived in this area for 15 years. And on West Sixth Street, when you come from Bridge Street and go towards Eagle Park, there is a lot of speeding that goes on. And there is a crosswalk on Hampshire Street going towards Eagle Park, and there's a lot of speeding. There is a crosswalk there. However, people don't tend to stop. So one of my recommendations or my suggestions is if there could be a speed bump possibly put in that area to stop cars from speeding before they even get to the crosswalk. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Councilor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have too much to add. I want to thank Ms. Tyree for bringing this issue to my attention. Once she did, she happened to mention that, you know, she can see this particular crosswalk from the front of her house, and had seen, you know, pedestrians getting stuck in the middle of the crosswalk, cars speeding by, not seeing them. So I'm not sure what the best remedy might be. You know, one, to address the speeding, turning onto West Sixth from Bridge, that's one issue. If there are other ways it could be addressed, just to make the crosswalk possibly a little bit more visible. As you do turn onto West Sixth, it comes up somewhat fast. And, you know, I could potentially see how, you know, a driver may not realize they're approaching a crosswalk till they get there. So I don't know if there may be ways just to, you know, whether it be crosswalk painting or somehow making it more visible, or making drivers more aware that they're approaching a crosswalk, anything we can do to make it a little bit safer for pedestrians who are crossing the street to Eagle Park would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott.
I'm for speed bumps. We've been talking about that for a while. And, Madam Manager, I know we're looking for a traffic engineer, but I know we're going to pilot in some areas. Is that still in the works? Or was that put on hold when our traffic engineer left? I thought we were going to look at Boylston, or Middlesex or Summit. I just happen to think that they're well-marked in other communities, and we can do it here. And we can enforce, we can put up radar, we can do all these things. But unless there's some mechanism that'll slow people down when nobody's watching, or there's no radar, then I just think it's, and I understand the plow issue, but I think that other communities have dealt with it, we can too. So is, I know we don't have a traffic engineer.
Yeah, that's the problem.
That is a problem.
It is. It's become a huge problem, and the backlog of motions is just growing. You know, there are certain things that, you know, the assistant has been able to do, but doesn't have the capability or the, you know, the designation to do some of these bigger projects. So, you know, we had thought of trying to bring in a consultant to do this on a contract basis. That wasn't supported, and so we continue to advertise. So.
Yeah, no, I was one. I didn't think that we should be hiring a consultant to answer motions. So what is the salary that we're offering? I mean, clearly, someone else is taking something away from us. And we, it's become one of those positions that's important in the city, because traffic is one of the main complaints, concerns that you get, we get, and that we need to address. There's more motions coming forward. So I know we're trying to be frugal, and we are frugal, but it's a very important position that if we have to make cuts elsewhere, then I, you know, I think that we need to do that in order to get a traffic engineer. So.
We're trying.
Right. No, I'm not, I'm sure you are, but, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any further comment on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Next, 12.8, Councilor Samaras requests city manager have appropriate department conduct a traffic study on Route 38 and Andover Street, including a study of the streets used as cut-throughs, i.e. Douglas Road, Clark Road, and Wentworth Avenue. Seconded by Councilor Noon. Councilor Samaras.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Also, I'd like to, Mayor Leahy called me, and he wanted to include Fairmont Street as one of the cut-throughs also in this motion. Actually, I think this motion has a familiar look about it, because I think these are streets that every council here has made some type of motion in the past about it. I can think of eight years ago, one of my first motions, starting many motions on the streets, these streets, was to create a left-turn light from Connevesma Street and Andover Street, and the state did finally come through. Madam Manager, Councilor Elliott just brought up the fact that I know we don't have a traffic engineer. But I think at some point, we have to look at how we can help you. Is it more money? Is the department too small in a sense? Should we be adding not only a traffic engineer, but an assistant to handle some of these situations? Because I think we're barely in need of one at this particular point. All right, let's start. Route 38, the traffic really has, it's just increasing day by day. And you see a lot of cars, especially from New Hampshire, coming through the city of Lowell, going out to 495. When the store, the marijuana, the store selling the marijuana opens up, that's going to be another traffic problem from Route 38. When you're talking about Andover Street, just for example, every day I've been going at different times, but really right after 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, say, it should be slow till, say, maybe 3 o'clock or something like that. It's just more and more traffic in that area. It's heavy traffic. It's the type of traffic, though, if you're driving Andover Street, I think many times, many of you, I know I have a number of times, driving the speed limit, there's always somebody behind you beeping their horn. They want to get through you. It's hard to believe. But also, when you talk about the cut-through streets like Clark Road, Wentworth Avenue, Fairmont, Douglas, what you can observe in Andover Street now, many of the side streets have been cut through, especially from Lowell, Merrimack Street, coming up to Andover Street to go out towards Tuxbury and Andover. When you talk about Clark Road, you know, coming from 38, going and coming from those areas. But I think some of the problems that we've had in the past, there was a time when Billrica High School was being built, and there was, I guess, a large number of trucks coming from the Andover area with Phil going to Billrica. And I think they went, a lot of them went through Wentworth Avenue and other cut-through streets, down Boylston Avenue to get out to Billrica High School. So I remember we had complaints to this city council about that issue there. And what happens is the issue sort of solved itself, because the high school was built. But I think what you have to deal with, Madam Manager, is that you'll get a number of complaints, because a project starts somewhere, and all of a sudden, these 10-wheelers or whatever are going through our neighborhoods. And they don't go through slowly. They go through too fast. And when you look at 38, Andover Street, and Clark Road, it's a perfect triangle. And the thing is, and then cars from, and from the areas on the side of the triangle, getting into the triangle, or going around the triangle, there's a lot of going through the triangle. I don't know what we can do, but all I'm suggesting at this point is that I think there's two things. We need to look at 38 and Andover Street and say, what's the projection for the future? How much use do we anticipate will increase over the years? And what do we have to do to handle it? And then the cut-throughs, I mean, is it, will a sign stop them through certain streets? Is it more police action? Has it just been brought up, speed bumps? But I think we have to do something, because in the last several weeks, I think I counted at least 15 people that brought up, broached the subject in a different manner. Either they were concerned about cut-through, either they're concerned about the traffic, or the number of accidents that have fender benders that have been happening in this area. So it's kind of a, you know, what am I asking? I'm asking for an awful lot, but I think what we need to do is really have a study on the two main streets, and then another plan as to how we can deal with these cut-throughs. And, you know, really try to alleviate some of the fears that a lot of people who live in that area have for their children. I mean, when you look at Douglas Road, I mean, the Riley School is right there as an example. You have the stadium, but I've seen large trucks, you know, when I've had the ambition to walk, you know, that far, which is, is, you just see a lot of potential problems coming up. And the thing is, so I don't know what you can do at this particular point, whether some in the DPD can do this, or is it, do we wait for a traffic engineer? But, you know.
This would definitely require a traffic engineer, or even, I mean, this.
It's more, you know, so how can we help at this point? Because you have a lot of people carrying an extra load that's really burdensome. So we know there's a lot of good things happening, but, you know, how much can you do at this point?
Councilor Conway.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wholeheartedly agree with this motion. I think it's something that, you know, we always need to reexamine a problem area, very dangerous traffic areas in the city. And, you know, what Councilor Samaras just pointed out, in particular Roger Street and Andover Street, and the cut-throughs, I'm very familiar with those. I grew up on Roger Street. And I can remember my mother sitting down and saying, "We're going to have to move, because the traffic is so terrible here." And she said, "It's only going to get worse." So obviously, she was right. It's going to get worse, and it has. And now I live on Andover Street, and I see firsthand. I see the speeding that takes place. I see the, you know, people trying to cross Andover Street, and they can't do it. There's no crosswalks. You know, and again, just to regress a second, go back. When I was in high school, there were three issues that constantly was discussed in the city of Lowell. First, public safety, economic development, and the third one was traffic. So it looks like we could probably take that and just change the date and have it as 2021. I think that back, back a few years ago, when you take a look at Andover Street, for example, Andover Street, before they changed to the present system of three lanes, there used to be four, and it was like a superhighway. And there were a lot of problems, a lot of traffic problems, a lot of accidents. And the real issue was when somebody wanted to take a left. How did they do it? It just, it was, it was a real disaster. And matter of fact, if you go back into the early 80s, in one particular year, there were three children that were severely, and three different accidents were severely hurt. And that, I think, is probably one of the reasons why they changed it to the three lanes, to try to cut down on some of the problems. I think that if it's acceptable to the maker of the motion, I'd like to also make a friendly amendment to the motion to add Nesma Street and East Merrimack Street and the cut-throughs from Rivercliff Road through Barresford Avenue off Andover Street to this motion. Because those cut-throughs there, I'll tell you, I've had more complaints, because what they do is they cut through, go down East Merrimack Street, they go over to Senneville, or they go to the Highlands, or they go to Pellham. Over, you know, and it really is a very dangerous situation. Those cars go down those streets. If there's little kids that come out, there is no way on heavens that those cars can stop in time. So again, I think it's good that we sit back down the table, and hopefully something will, you know, will change. First of all, we need the traffic engineer. That's the difficult part. Can I, I'd like to ask you, Madam Manager, through the mayor. The traffic engineers, somebody was asking me about that the other day, and I really didn't have the answers. Are there any colleges and universities around that have that as a course? A program?
I can't answer that, actually. I don't know. I do know that it's very hard to find a traffic engineer. Especially with all of the construction projects that are ongoing. Most are moving to the private sector and working with private consultants on construction projects, traffic projects, and the like. So it's, it is, I think it's a question of there is not an abundance of traffic engineers, is probably what the challenge is that we're facing.
Well, hopefully, we can do something with it. And again, if the maker of the motion would accept those additional streets.
No, certainly accept those additions.
Okay, thank you.
Because actually, if you look at all of the streets that go towards either Clark Road, Andover Street, or Route 38, they're all cut-throughs.
Yep.
So thank you.
Thank you. So motion is amended by Councilor Samaras. Seconded by, well, motion by Councilor Conway amended.
And also could we include Mayor Leahy also?
Sure.
He asked for that.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion amended and carries. 12.9, Councilor Rourke requests city manager have DPW conduct a condition inspection and report prepared for all culverts supporting Marble's Brook from Campbell Field to Merrimack River, including Clay Pit. Seconded by Councilor Elliott. Councilor Rourke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so I think what I was looking for is a site assessment of each of the culverts, and furthermore, you know, possible, you know, how to clear, block drainage, you know, looking at the Brooks itself to see, you know, different types of flow management devices that are there. I understand just last week, there was a problem over next to Campbell Field. And, you know, if it rains a couple of inches, and I know that the water level does go up, that shouldn't be an excuse for why, you know, basements are flooding over in that area. So looking at preventative ways to keep this from happening. I know that there are, you know, there are fillers, there, you know, there are drainage systems that can be put in, you know, temporary ponds and so forth that can be used. So anything that can be done, again, to be more proactive and reactive. I understand that DPW was over there many times over the past couple of weeks, and did a good job of trying to temper the water level that's over there. But something that could be done on a permanent basis that keeps the water level, you know, to where it was just, you know, a few years ago, where now Campbell Field, or Flaggies, as it's called, in Potteckville, when it rains, is now almost underwater. There are pictures that were sent to me over there, and just a few years ago, it was a dust bowl. So hopefully, something can be done, again, with the culverts and the Brooks, and possible, you know, deterrents for beavers, and then, you know, more important. you know, more importantly, different types of, of management devices for, for the water flow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Hearing, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. God bless you. 12.10, Councilor Chow, request city manager have law department draft a resolution recognizing Asian and Pacific Islanders Month in May, and also acknowledging the strong role of our Asian first responders within the city during the COVID pandemic, seconded by Councilor Noon. Oh, Rithi Young. Thank you. Councilor Noon. Councilor Chow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you. In the mayor section, you recognized May's AAPI month already. I just want to add, I want to thank each and all first responders, and the frontline workers have made tremendous sacrifices serving and keeping our residents safe. To the Lowell police officers, firefighters, EMTs, nurses, and doctors, we can't show enough gratitude for all you do. Among this group of working-class heroes, I also want to highlight the growing numbers of Asian-American first responders and their contributions during AAPI months in May, which we celebrate people of Asian-American Pacific Islanders heritage. Especially for the Southeast Asian-American first responders, we've seen your contributions and commitment to our city and residents. Continue your great work. You are a role model for our next generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further question? Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The month of May, every year, the Asian-American Pacific Islander, we celebrate, and we recognize, America recognize the contribution of the AAPI. As we pay tribute to the achievement of the generation of Asian-American Pacific Islander, the recent surge in discrimination and hate crime against the AAPI community has demonstrated how much work must still be done to achieve their full qualities. I hope that, you know, that we recognize that, we recognize the achievement, but also, we need to say that there's a lot more work that we need to do to make sure that we treat the AAPI with full equality. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Next two motions are by Mayor Leahy. I asked, maybe he wanted to leave them into the next council meeting, but he does not. So, I will say 12.12, Mayor Leahy, request city manager have DPW ensure all firehouses have adequate hot water to run extractor washers, seconded by Councilor Chow.
I, I second that, and also want to make a comment on that, if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead.
The reason I say that, because I spoke with Mayor Leahy early this afternoon, and he wants to convey to the public how important this is. Washing off the protective gear is a necessity. The, I can't say the extractor washer, these are heavy-duty washers that handle the equipment, the gear that the firefighters wear, and they need the hot water to dislodge the soil, the chemical, the dry debris off the protective equipment. Having a clean equipment is necessity. It's, it's for their, their health if they wear, like, dirty debris or this equipment. It's, it's not good for their health, basically. So, I think it's important to have this hot water, and all the firehouses for the firefighters to have clean uniform. Thank you.
Do you think that maybe it's a question of increasing the water heater? I don't know. I mean, is it the water heater too small that, that we're getting the water, hot water from? Madam Donahue?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe the chief is putting together a proposal for hot water heaters where needed, new, new hot water heaters where needed in the firehouses. Mr. Baldwin, I know, has been in contact with them.
That's right, Madam Manager. I've been in contact with the chief, and he has been pricing out some hot water heaters. So, I expect a, a report will be sent back in due time.
All right, good. Thank you. Any further comments or questions on this motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Next motion, 12.13, Mayor Leahy, request city manager explore feasibility of placing cameras on top of City Hall for public-private enterprise, seconded by Councilor Rourke. We have a registered speaker, Mr. Clark.
Sean Kelly.
Hi, guys. Thanks for having me tonight. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Sean Kelly. I am the founder of Mill City Weather. We just celebrated our 10th anniversary. Let me give you some history on Mill City Weather. I've always been interested in weather, growing up, meteorology. In fact, I'm self-taught. Growing up in Lowell with the family of three kids, I've always had a fight over the remote control to get the weather channel on TV, or even the local news at the time, to even see Jim Cantore on the weather channel in any severe weather, or local on the eights, growing up, of course. From then, I started reading books about weather, and I started taking SkyOne classes through the National Weather Service, in which I am a trend spotter for the Lowell area. Eventually, started to purchase computer programs to make the graphics from what you see today. We now have over 21,000 followers on Facebook alone, and a few other thousand on Twitter, and just over 300 members on our website. One great program that we purchased is called WSB3. The founder is actually out of Windham, New Hampshire. And this program is used to display radar and other key information for us back here at our station. Mill City Weather also owns and maintains multiple weather stations, 17 of them, across Southern Hampshire, the Merrimack Valley, all the way up to the seacoast, the Mazathtes. We also have Mill City Weather Salisbury, where we pull raw data from for our weather stations. Then we study the elevations and how weather interacts with, with each station. From there, we're able to get a better hold of what to expect for us back here in Lowell. The northeast as it is, it's very tricky to forecast. We have had a fair share of storms, weather events, over the years. A lot of the storms move from west to east, and as that happens, they have to go over the Berkshires, and then back over the West Hills. And as they enter the Merrimack Valley, a lot of storms either hold on and break apart as they enter the Merrimack Valley, of course. From the winter of 2014 to 2015, we had over 120 inches of snow, and that being the snowiest on record, as we all can remember. We actually won a contest with the most snowfall with a city of a population over 100,000. Mill City Weather has been forecasting a lot of weather events, from winter storms, even severe weather. And how would a city camera help us and everyone overall, we're asked, multiple ways. From what, going back to the weather event we had last year, a microburst, right around this time, May 15th, to be exact. As you know, a microburst is also known as a downburst, and when winds from above come down into the surface, usually straight-line wind, causing sometimes wood damage.
Excuse me, excuse me. Could I ask you a question? Are we talking about putting a camera on top of City Hall for the purpose of you to get better reception for your weather channel? Is this what we're talking about?
Well, for that too, and for also the city website, first off, it would bring a lot of traffic to the website as it is. And let me show you how a similar view would look.
Well, you only have five minutes, sir. I'm sorry, but if you could make it a little briefer, please?
Yep. So, something right here, right at the end. A camera on the top would provide views into the city, pretty much to see the sunsets, or even if there's any storms that come in from higher elevation. City Hall would be where it is, of course. Again, it would also show a lot of local events, which you have the Winter Fest, you have the Folk Festival, and a lot of other key events from being higher up, right at City Hall. It would also drive, again, traffic into the website.
That is a very beautiful view, but the fact remains that, before we put anything on this building, this is a historic building, we have to run it through our historic board before that can happen. But I would like to just refer your motion to the city manager, if I could do that. Thank you very much. Refer the motion to the city manager, seconded by Councilor Rourke. Thank you so much. We're wrapping that up. We get your point. Thank you very much. Next, we will be going into, oh, are there any? Oh, Madam Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make this quick. I do want to let the council and the community know that free testing, the Stop the Spread testing for COVID is returning to the city starting tomorrow. And it will be going seven days a week, different hours each day. Tuesdays, 12 to 6, Wednesdays, 8 to 2, Thursdays, 12 to 6. These are hours that we're starting with right now, and they alternate depending on the day, and depending on the demand. But just quickly, this will be done at Colley Stadium, as we did do in December. Enter through Douglas Road, exit through Village Street. And you do not need an appointment, though you can make an appointment. You can reserve one online at lowalma.gov/covidtesting. Walk-ups will be also welcomed at the site. So, you know, we're making significant progress vaccinating people in the city. Nonetheless, testing's going to continue to be important. So, if people feel they've been exposed, or they want to make sure they don't have COVID, or feel that they need to be tested, this is where you should go. And the, this we expect, this is being conducted by medical personnel from the CIC Health, and this is in partnership with the state. We expect this to be in operation throughout the summer months. So, anybody needs any information, just let us know. But just so everybody knows, Stop the Spread testing is back in Lowell.
Thank you very much. Any other? Councilor Rourke?
Just a quick question. You said the testing. When you view on the city's website, Lowell's numbers seem really, really low. In a couple of days, in the single digits. Is there a reason? Does the state approach the city to do this, or?
Yeah, the state-
It also seems like-
We're still in the red. We're one of the 13 communities that are in the red. So-
And we expect this all summer long to be available?
Yes. Right now, it's all summer long, and the state is paying for the testing.
Okay. So, when I see the results posted on the city website, again, some of them were, I think one day was zero, another day was two or three. So, how does the state calculate that Lowell's still in the red if, if we're reporting that our numbers are not low?
I don't, I haven't seen them that low. I saw them in, you know, in the 30 range on some of the days. It, you know, we're, we're still at around 5% positivity rate. So, that puts us in the red.
Great. All right, thank you.
But we'll, you know, we're, we're still one of those, like I said, 13 communities that are still red.
Thank you very much. I have briefly an announcement on Thursday, May 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00. The Four Sisters Owl Diner will be sponsoring the Bridge Club of Greater Lowell. To, to save on a life, it's all, to save one life, it's all worthwhile. Come in, have a coffee, make a donation, and save a life. This is to help fight addiction. Thank you very much. Now, any further announcements? 12, 13.1, executive session regarding the matter of litigation, namely Hoot et Al versus City of Lowell, public discussion of which may have a detrimental effect on the city. And also, if we could have a motion as well to adjourn from the executive session. Motion by Councilor Conway, seconded by Councilor Rourke. Roll call.
Councilor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy, Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Great, great job. Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience.